Great, all right. Good evening and welcome to the Brattleboro Select Board meeting of Thursday, March 6th. And we met for an executive session at 5:45. And before we went into that, I asked John whether this meeting was properly warned, and he said, it was. And so it was. First order of business tonight is to approve minutes. We have minutes from February 18th, 2025. Can I get a motion on that? Richard?
We approve the minutes of February 18th.
Okay, Richard's made a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th as presented. Discussion. Okay, see none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from February 18th, 2025, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Next order of business is Chair's remarks. I wanted to congratulate all of the people who were elected to various positions on Tuesday. That's why we're meeting today instead of Tuesday because there was stuff going on. So congratulations to the Select Board members, to the Representative Town Meeting members. And I look forward to working with all of those folks. I look forward to RTM, which will take place on March 22nd. And I don't know if you're going to talk about our schedule in your comments, but if not, I will talk about it now.
About which part of it?
Well, we have a very weird March. And so we actually aren't meeting on any Tuesdays in March, I don't think. So we have tonight's meeting, which would have taken place on Tuesday. And then next Monday, we're meeting here again with the state legislative delegation from the Brattleboro area. And then the following, and then the Wednesday of that week, we have the RTM information session. And then the following week after that, we're meeting on Thursday instead of Tuesday because it's a school board budget vote thing.
Thursday is the 20th.
The 20th, yeah. And then we have Representative Town Meeting on the 22nd. And that will round out my March. And other people will also come back for an organizational meeting on the Monday after RTM. So lots going on in March. Congratulations to all. And usually I talk about how to participate in this meeting, so I'll just do that really briefly. In order to participate, all you've got to do is raise your hand at an appropriate point, and I will recognize you. And that means like, I'll say like, you sir. And you'll come up to the microphone, and you'll say your name and where you're from. And then you'll have up to three minutes to speak on the topic at hand. And we would ask that folks just behave in a kind of civil way with one another and be respectful. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks and pass it on to John for manager's comments.
Thanks, Daniel. Huge thank you to all of our election workers who made a very busy election season, the whole season run safely and smoothly. And we also really appreciate the American Legion for being wonderful partners in making a venue available that's accessible and accessible location to everyone where we hold our elections. Also, thank you to the many voters who cast their ballots and conducted themselves in a very respectful manner during the most contested local election we've seen in a very long time, according to the town clerk. The Representative Town Meeting information session, as Daniel mentioned, will be held on Wednesday, March 12th, beginning at 7:00 PM at the Academy School Gym. District meetings will be held at the same location starting at 5:45 that night. Those will be to determine district chairs in each of the districts, and also it will give residents of the districts an opportunity to voice their thoughts to their elected representatives. At this time, there are no open seats to be appointed by caucus in any of the three districts. A reminder that dog license renewals are due to the town clerk's office on or before April 1st. That's no joke. To avoid a late fee. If you have already sent it in, please know that we're catching up after the election and will be processing any received renewals in the next week or two. The Nelson Withington skating facility will be closing for the season on Sunday, March 9th. So if you want to get a skate in, you have a short time to do it. Recreation and Parks Department is now taking registration for spring youth sports, T-ball, small fry baseball, girls' youth softball, boys' and girls' lacrosse, and gymnastics. You can register in person or online at brattleboro.gov. Just click on the Recreation and Parks Department for the registration link. The deadline to obtain a business license at the $50 fee is March 15th. After March 15th, the cost increases to $75. Businesses can simply log into their account at brattleboro.gov if they created one last year to renew. New accounts can be created on the business license page at brattleboro.gov. If you're mailing a check, postmarks will be accepted for that March 15th deadline. For assistance with the program, you can contact the Assessor's Office at 802-251-8156. As we enter the spring season, please be aware that our gravel roads may become muddy due to the thawing of winter snow and ice. Starting on Monday, Monday, the 10th, the Department of Public Works will be monitoring these roads on a daily basis and providing status updates through the roadside signs that they have at the ends of the gravel roads throughout town, and also by way of an online map, which you can find on the town website. Finally, I just have a few things to say. Brattleboro is a town full of people who care deeply. Our town staff are working full out every day to serve this community, and they do so with dedication, commitment, and professionalism. We know that residents have high expectations for service, responsiveness, and quality. And that's a good thing. We strive to meet those expectations fairly, openly, and without discrimination. Right now, there's a lot of tension in town. There's frustration. We're seeing finger pointing. We're seeing efforts to catch people out. But that kind of energy can have unintended consequences. It can divide us instead of helping us all move forward together. We've just had an election, and our elected officials are stepping in with fresh energy and a shared commitment to making Brattleboro the best it can be. No matter where you stand on particular issues, we all have a role to play in strengthening this town. So my ask is that you support your elected officials, you support your town staff, and you support each other. And let's all keep Brattleboro and what's best for Brattleboro front and center in our minds and end in our actions as well. Let's commit to working together with respect even when we disagree. That's how we build a stronger community and a place where we can all be proud to be a part of. That's what I had tonight.
Thanks, John. Next up is Select Board comments and all committee reports. Elizabeth?
I just wanted to also thank all the people who ran for office and didn't win. It takes a lot of effort. And I just want to thank everyone for their commitment to the whole electoral process.
Thank you. Yeah, that was remiss of me. Other members? Franz?
Yeah. Thank you, Daniel. I want to chime in on what some of what John was just referring to about allegations and really serious allegations that have been made against town personnel, particularly in our police department. And I find these allegations to be conjectural, unsubstantiated, putting the worst possible interpretation on things that in most cases are fairly unclear. And I refer people not to other people's opinions about this, but to the original documents which are available. And if you're going to, you know, launch some kind of criticism or even attack on individuals who work for the town, you should have your facts all lined up and not just be relying on something you read that somebody said or that you heard. And it's very discouraging to me to hear people who are apparently all too ready to jump to conclusions on stuff like this. If anybody, and even the the level of allegations that have been made are not that somebody did something that actually caused harm to a person or the town. It's, you know, that we have some standards that we have to maintain, and people let us down and things like that. Well, okay, if you've got examples of things like that or more serious allegations, bring them out. Let's talk about them. Let's hear what the real story is. But it's very discouraging to me, and I would really caution people not to just spread innuendo around, especially if you haven't looked at what really happened. And let me tell you, I have looked at the documents that have been provided. And to me, there are multiple interpretations of who said what to whom and what we're looking at. And, okay, here's an email, but who wrote that email? And not who was it sent to, who wrote it? And who are you going to criticize based on somebody sent them an email? I mean, anyway, I don't want to go further into it, but I hope people will do what John said, and that is think about the town. Think what's good for our community. And let's kind of get off this social media level of discourse. And I invite anyone who's got concerns about anything going on in town government, come and talk to us. Come and talk to me. I'm certainly available. And I'd be happy to sit down with people and really go over point by point what we know and what it means. But to just sort of get out there with a broad brush and 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 make allegations that are really potentially very harmful to our town. I think that's irresponsible, and I hope people will stop doing it.
Thank you. Other board members? Okay, so we're going to move on to public participation. I got a spiel. Let me give the spiel first of all. So this is the part of the meeting where people can speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda. And all you need to do is raise your hand, and I will recognize you. It's also an opportunity for a member of the public to request that something be pulled from our consent agenda. John, you want to just give a quick run through what's on that?
Oh, you want to do that now?
I forget, you know, whether we do it that way or not. It's been a crazy time. There's a bunch of things on the consent agenda. If you've got the agenda in front of you, you'll see what they are. And you might say, hey, I'd like to discuss that. Consent agenda means we just pass it without any kind of like discussion. So there are a couple of people that wish to raise their hands. Get up to three minutes and state your name and where you're from, and keep it on topic. All right. Yes.
Good evening, members of the Select Board.
Could you state your name?
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay.
And members of Brattleboro residents, my name is Kenneth Gutwine. I'm a retired professor of history and philosophy from New York State. And I came to Brattleboro because I love the idea of having a community which works together in peace and in harmony, as John said, and not trying to rip each other apart as the community I came from in New York was. Also, the beauty of Brattleboro itself drew myself and my wife to the community. And I was very, very much looking forward to the election that we had on Tuesday. Yeah, this was an open election, and it seemed like everything, everyone here seemed to want to participate. Fifteen members RTM and Select Board members until I turned the ballot over. I turned it over to Article Two, and I couldn't believe what I was reading. This can't be. Of course, we want liberty. Of course, we work for freedom. Of course, we are against discrimination. But when the attacks on Israel began on the last sentence particularly, it was so harmful to me, feeling that these attacks are so baseless, that they are simply a mem for antisemitism and Jew hatred. To call Israel an apartheid state has become the code word for antisemitism nowadays. And not only that, it is also the word that the Palestinian terrorists Hamas used, especially when they went in and killed 1,200 women and children on October 7th of 2024. In cold blood, no less. We should never have gotten this posted on a local ballot. Why did we post it on the ballot? I know that if you have a certain number of signatures, you can get an article posted. But this is hate speech. Hate speech based on the fact that Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East that protects all of its citizens, whether they are LGBTQ+, whether they are Arab citizens, whether they are from any discriminated group. If they're Israeli citizens, they are protected and not set apart like apartheid. And furthermore, furthermore, that these people who are behind this kind of article are people that support, support terrorism. It's a known fact. I have looked into it. So I asked the Select Board, please, never again, never again go for something like this on a ballot for the people of Brattleboro. The people of Brattleboro want to vote on issues that affect them. They don't want to get into involved in disputes and references to antisemitism or Jew hatred as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kenneth. And next up, I think we'll go to Dick on Zoom, and then we'll come back to the room.
Good evening.
My good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Dick DeGray, District Eight. Certainly, I want to echo what everybody said. Congratulations to the winners of the Select Board. But I also would like to say that the news of Patrick Morley leaving us that came about in the break from the previous meeting caught me by surprise. I would like to wish him well. He was hired under our board's watch. I was the chair of the board when he was hired. And he has done admirable work for the town. He has done two stints as the acting town manager, one for well over a year. And as I have said before, when people leave, we didn't fall into the abyss. And so, Patrick, I want to wish you well. You will be missed. I'm sure those shoes will be filled. They may not be fit as good as what you wore, but we will miss you, and I wish you well. The last thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate what John said. I certainly appreciate what Franz said. And I can tell you, I am unequivocally behind our police department. Chief Norma has done a outstanding job here in Brattleboro, working with Holy Pictures and Rosary Bee. She's never had a full complement of people, and she is finally getting there. There are so many good things going on in our community with our police department. And everybody in the community has always supported her at the board meetings, on the street. And I certainly have, when I have issues with anybody, any department, I'm not afraid to raise them. But I also know that I'm not afraid to support them. And I think that the police department is doing yeoman's work, and I congratulate them, and I wish them well. And the hypocrisy about what's going on to think that we need to terminate hard beef is despicable, that it's just so uncalled for, and that I'm in Norma Hardy's corner and the rest of the police department. So I agree with John. Let's turn the page. We can disagree, and we can have discourse, but it needs to be respectful. And these are people's lives. They're our community. And so I wish our police department well going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Kate, did you want to speak?
Hi, I'm Kate O'Connor from Brattleboro, and I want to make a public service announcement on behalf of the Charter Revision Commission. The meeting that we had to cancel about the future of our annual town meeting has been rescheduled to Monday, March 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. We will be pushing out some more information about it, but we do have, the Charter Commission has its own webpage on the town's website, brattleboro.gov. So if anyone wants to look there, but be on the lookout for more info, and we hope people will show up. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. I think there's one more hand on Zoom. I think it's Mr. Rivard. Correct.
Yeah.
Good evening. If you could just introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Jeffrey Rivard. I've been a resident of Brattleboro for about five years.
Welcome.
Thank you. I kind of came into this meeting halfway through. I had some commentary about policing in the community already as well. I'd like to speak to members of the committee in private regarding these matters because since I moved here, I have some concerns where I feel like, well, I read recently in the news about the trespassing issues with police, which I have said publicly is a weaponization of that system. And I myself reached out to the town manager, Mr. Potter here, when I was picking up my student at the bus stop and was arrested for trespassing off of the property that the trespass was issued for. Now, it's hard to balance being a resident of this community versus a longtime member of the community who may have more invested in the local police, so the authorities, businesses, commerce, et cetera. But I do feel very much attacked by police where, you know, this is a simple issue regarding enforcement, and yet I'm being criminally charged for this trespassing issue that has been claimed to be weaponized. I asked the town manager to hear my appeal. This is a simple issue. And where I never got a response, I've now been arrested. I've had to stay a day in jail at the prison. I've been trespassed from the police department for no reason, simply because this chief Hardy wanted it. And it's hurtful and harassing to have this happen. And I can't imagine what other people are upset about, except I don't talk to these people. So this is personal experience that I feel should be shared. So it's hard. I understand that you want to invest in a community, and there's this concern to not make allegations as such. But, but, you know, I'm not doing anything to harm this community. Like I said, I was just picking up my student, and now I have criminal charges. And I would like these issues to be fairly addressed and not have this smear in paper, public record documents that I'm lying or attacking police. When I, as a person, I just have a legitimate concern. I believe I've experienced misconduct. And rather than have it dismissed infensively, by the way, I think some discipline should be instituted. And while I have many other concerns, that that is all I have to speak of today due to its importance and personal nature.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Franz?
Thank you, Daniel. Mr. Rivard, I just want to reiterate my invitation for people to come and talk to me about matters like this. If by any chance you're available tomorrow morning, I'll be having my office hours at the works on Main Street from 8:00 to 10:00. That would be an opportunity for you to come and talk to me. Or it could be some other time. And if you get in touch with me, I'd be very much like, I'd very much like to continue this conversation.
Thanks, Franz. Okay, any more public comments about something that is not on tonight's agenda? And Lila, if you wouldn't mind not trying to join our screen?
What's that?
It's somebody like, sort of like paired to the screen, kind of, or trying to.
Finance meeting next door, maybe they're trying to.
Yeah.
I must admit, I've not seen that.
You haven't? I think we've seen it once before. Should we take a couple of minutes? Or?
Maybe just a simple Bluetooth thing.
Could just be the TV, because, you know, everything's fine on the Zoom, so.
Okay, all right. Hi, guys. Welcome back. Sorry, technical difficulties. So I was asking whether there are any other members of the public that wish to that wish to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda. Doesn't seem that there are. So in which case, we will move on to the consent agenda. John, would you give us a brief summary of what's on it, please?
Yes, we have six items on the consent agenda tonight. Excuse me. If you approve this agenda, you will be awarding an $18,500 contract to Awesome Property Services for seasonal cemetery maintenance. You will be awarding a $190,598 contract to Cleveland Electric for removal and installation of lights at the upper field at Living Memorial Park. And we'll be purchasing the new LED lighting system for $156,451 from Sourcewell. You will be renewing two first and third-class liquor licenses, one for the Brattleboro Food Cooperative at 2 Main Street, and the other for Midnight's LLC at 2 High Street. You'll be awarding a $34,895 contract to Arbor Climb Tree Service for maintenance of approximately 55 trees at eight different parks. And you will be ratifying a parade permit for Brattleboro Area Action for an event that took place on Sunday, March 2nd.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion? Franz?
I'd like to move Item B off the consent agenda. And I would suggest that we incorporate it in our other discussion about the Living Memorial Park project update and maintenance building contingency.
So be it. So that is Living Memorial Park Softwell Lights Contract. We'll discuss that as part of Item B unless there's anyone on this board that wants to object to that. I think it would be easiest, probably. Okay, very good. Would you like to make a further motion?
Yes, other than that one change, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. So Franz has made a motion to approve the consent agenda without Item B on it, but everything else as it was submitted. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes four in favor. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. And any abstentions? Okay, one abstaining. All right, so passes four, and then with one abstention, four zero, I guess. Okay, moving on to first item of new business. Congratulations on the liquor licenses. We have an update from Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services. Dr. George Karabakakis is going to present to us at our beautiful presenter's table here. I hope you feel very special.
Do I have to stand?
You could stand, you know, if you wish.
I don't do that.
Yeah.
No, I like to sit.
All right, and I think Patrick's got a presentation queued up for you. So George, welcome. Thanks for coming. Take it away.
Okay.
Just a second, George.
Can you, can you hear me okay there? Is the mic good?
Yeah, the mic is really just amplified for the broadcast.
Okay, so... So I, my name is George Karabakakis. I'm the CEO of HCRS. I've been with HCRS for over 30 years, worked in hall programs at one time or another. And I'm here to talk a little bit about what we do and who we are and our services. And so, next slide, yeah. We were founded in 1967. We are a one of 10 designated community mental health agencies in the state of Vermont, and we serve Wyndham and Windsor Counties. There's also six specialized service agencies that provide more focused sort of specialty services like Families First, Lincoln Street, NFI. And we have, although we have 550-plus staff, we actually have about 630 positions budgeted. We also have 130 shared living providers who are independent contractors who provide services and supports to people with developmental disabilities that we serve. And we have about, we have 20 facilities. We also have a lot of staff that are embedded in various programs. And, you know, Winston-Proudy and a lot of other different programs. So, yeah, we can go two slides further. So our locations in Brattleboro, and I'm going to focus on Brattleboro, but our locations here are at 51 Fairview Street. We have our outpatient mental health and substance use services, which also includes crisis services. We have our developmental services program at 29 Elm Street. Our youth stabilization program at 413 Canal Street, which is right next to the House of Pizza. Meadow, and that wasn't an ad, I just, it's just...
It's just where it is.
It's just, you know, it's a marker.
It's also near a gas station.
Just want to, yeah, no, absolutely. So, and Meadow View Intensive Recovery Residence, which is a couple of doors down, a couple of houses down from the Retreat Farm. It's a six-bed intensive recovery residence. We also have staff that are embedded, and I'll talk more about our collaborations, but we have embedded staff at the police department. We, and we actually started our police social work program about 23 years ago in Bellows Falls. So we've been, and we have police liaisons throughout our two counties. And we also have seven contracts with Brattleboro Schools, with three schools. In terms of collaborations, in the next slide, you'll see some of the collaborations that we have. Health Works Act, ACT stands for the Assertive Community Treatment. That is a collaboration with Groundworks, BMH, and The Retreat. And that is really focused on people who are unhoused, who have serious mental health issues, and it's really providing them a wraparound of supports and services. And it's really been a great, albeit grant-funded program. It's a wonderful collaboration. We have Project Connection Works, which is a collaboration with Groundworks, Interaction, Better Life Partners, but also other medication-assisted treatment providers like Savita and so forth. And they do outreach, they have peer support staff. We have, we, it's a HERSA, or it's a federal fund, Health Resources and Services Administration, that provides supports for folks out in the community, get them connected to resources, to get them connected to services and supports and substance use treatment providers. We have a mental health refugee program, grant, which unfortunately will end in the middle of December. And it is a program, it is a collaboration with ECDC, Ethiopian Community Development Council, to support our new neighbors in our community, providing life skills and therapy and groups. And we have a health coach coming in, and we have a lot of resources, employment, all sorts of supports for our new neighbors. We have a collaboration with Winston-Proudy called Children's Integrated Services, or CIS. And that is for kids who are zero to six, and of course, their families, around early childhood family mental health supports and services. And we've been doing that for many years. Again, there's the public school, there's the, our collaborations in the school. Plus, we also have a school, and I'll talk a little bit more about Kendall Farm. We operate a therapeutic school for boys in Townsend, Newfoundland. And they serve a lot of, they've served a lot of kids from our area, actually from Hartford all the way down to Wilmington and throughout our region. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that's just an amazing collaboration. And our police social work program, our police liaisons, the work that they do is just so critical to ensure that people get connected to social services, get connected to treatment, get connected to all the other resources in the community. Because oftentimes, it is not, the majority of folks that have contact with law enforcement don't need to be in the criminal justice system. It's a social service issue. It's an issue around the social determinants, the social factors that impact their lives. One Brattleboro is really a great collaboration of providers and community members and, you know, from the Select Board, John and Sue Graff from the Agency of Human Services have really done a really wonderful job of pulling together our community to really look at public health, to look at health, to look at quality of life, and certainly, public safety is a big piece of that. And the Situation Table is another place where we come together and focus on teams, identifying who are the individuals that come in frequent contact with law enforcement. Let's connect with them. Let's find a way, pull together a team to figure out what are the resources? What are the supports? What do they need? So they don't go back, so it's not about law enforcement. It's not about, it's about letting law enforcement do their job and making sure that people get the support and the services that they need. And the Situation Table is evidence-based. It's a national, actually, it's international. They, I think it's been, they've done it in Canada as well, who, Canada are neighbors to the north, that, who, and Kentucky and Oregon, all over the country, there's been, it's been a great model, and it actually has been going really well. We've been very involved with that. We have a health coach who's been at the community health team for many, I think, almost 15 years, and many other collaborations with BMH. I want to move to a couple of slides down to talk about our philosophy of care because I think it's really important to remember. This is one of the things, when I meet all our new employees, every two weeks, we have a new employee orientation. And I meet our staff, and I talk to them, and I talk to them about not only what we do and how we do it, but why we do it. What are the beliefs? What are the foundational beliefs that really are, they are kind of, that is the foundation of our, of our services and how we operate. And it's really, you know, making sure that clients are at the center of decision-making, that we really see the people we serve as resilient and capable and, you know, celebrating their strengths and acknowledging that it's the relationships of our staff, the healing and trusting relationships that help transform, that the treatment we provide is not just about the symptoms, it's about finding ways to address the mind, the body, and the spirit, along with everything else. And that social factors are a really critical piece of impacting people's lives. And knowing that it could be anyone, it could be any one of us. It could be our friends, it could be family, it could be our neighbors, we ourselves. It's not, there's no us and them, it is us. We would want, the way we try to support people with kindness and empathy and compassion and respect, it's what I would expect of a family member, it's what, it's how I would want to be treated. So that's how we should treat others. And that's something I communicate to our staff. And we also try to operate, and beyond that, acknowledging that stigma, oppression, and discrimination are real, they exist, and we need to figure out ways to minimize the impact because it impacts all of us in many ways. So I try to stress this because making sure that it's, whether it's in our supervisions with staff, whether it's our trainings, whether it's the programs that we develop, that they're in alignment with these beliefs, with these values. And I really stress that. And to me, this is, like, I can talk about locations and program, I can do that till, whatever, till the cows come home, but this is really at the heart. And so, moving along to care coordination, we have been fortunate enough to get a CCBHC, or Certified Community Behavioral Health Center, grant, which is similar to community health centers or what are called FQHC. So it provides enhanced funding, and we've gotten actually a million dollars for four years. And we're in our, we're sort of ending our, or in the middle of our third year. And care coordination is a piece of that. So we have six care coordinators who provide supports to, not just to our clients, but actually really trying to target folks who are not our clients, who need to be connected, who need healthcare, who need access to navigating the system, which is really, really complicated. It's also, it's, you know, there's, it's free, if you will. I mean, there is no, you know, there's no issue around Medicaid, or, you know, it's also helping people get onto Medicaid, advocating, empowering, trying to empower and support them. And also, if people are not quite sure where they want to go, just being there for them to help, help them navigate through our system and through the social service system. Children, Youth, and Families, on our next slide, we have, and, you know, I know, I don't have, I have another, maybe nine or 10 minutes left, I think, probably. So that's what, I've got my clock here. So with, in our Children, Youth, and Family Services, this, we, we provide assessments, we have clinicians, we have case managers that provide resources in the community. They go to people's homes, they go to, they've served people and support people on the street. We have psychiatry, psychiatric services. We have respite services for caregivers who might be just totally overwhelmed. We have school-based supports. We have something called the Jobs Program or Jumping Onboard for Success, which is a supported employment-intensive case management program. Danielle Southwell and Erica Kober are our two staff who do a remarkable job and connect people to employment, to housing, to GED, to, I mean, you name it, licenses, you know. It's just, they do an incredible job, and that is, again, for youth in transition. And along with that, we have our school-based programs. Although we work with three schools here, we work actually in 28 schools throughout our two counties. And we provide school-based clinician and behavioral interventions, kind of intensive supports for kids in schools. Our Adult Mental Health and Substance Use Services, we have therapeutic services. And this is for folks, whether they're unhoused, whether they're struggling with depression and trauma, anxiety, just a whole range of issues that might impact people's lives, including substance use. There are, we have individual and group therapy, we have case management. Again, those, that, those case management services are services where we support people in the community, help them connect with housing and employment, psychiatric services. We have peer support. We have about, I think, 12 or 13 peer support staff throughout our two counties. And they are people who have been there, who understand, who have had the lived experience of being in the mental health system. And they use that experience to engage and connect people and support people and let people know that there is someone in their corner, that there is, there is hope, there is possibility. And it's just a great program. And so, so we have, and of course, the employment support that I've mentioned earlier. Developmental Services is, again, it's for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I mentioned shared living providers and the support that they provide. But we also provide service coordination, employment support. We have a really robust support, sort of employer, you know, I mean, connections with employers and do a lot of support, employment, community integration, and respite services, and skills training, and just a whole range of supports. And it's really wraparound because in 1993, and that's when I started HCRS, Brandon Training School closed. There are no institutions for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We provide services to folks in the community so they can be a meaningful participant in the community, just like we all are. And so that's developmental. And then we have crisis services, which is like a whole thing, you know, people that are, there's two levels. We have 24/7 crisis services, which identify people who are at risk... We have 24/7 crisis services, which identify people who are at risk of being a danger to sell for others. And the idea is to determine, the idea is to determine if they need a higher level of care, like, let's say, to go to the retreat or whatever. They're almost always seen in the emergency room because they need to be medically cleared. But there's also an enhanced mobile crisis team, which is a two-person response, usually with a peer support person along with a crisis clinician. And it is, we are actually overseeing this new service for the state of Vermont, throughout the state, even though we're not providing it, but we're overseeing it. And, and so, it is to provide services to folks, not ju, and this is to children, to adults, to youth, to family members in the community who define that crisis, and it is not in the ER, it is not on hospital grounds, it needs to be in the community. We, it's, it's really an amazing program, and it's only been a year, I think we've done a really good job. And there's still going to be a lot more information on that. But the, the program at this point, there's been 20, over 2,600 encounters or go-outs, if you will, crisis contacts in the community and people's homes and so forth, and 10% have involved law enforcement. Now, that, to me, it actually, it should be even lower than that, but I think that's a pretty good number, when you think 90% of the contacts are without law enforcement. I think that's a really good thing. Also, we've, I don't know if it matters anything, you know, but we've hit all our key performance indicators and, you know, kind of the, the measures that we know that it's actually making a difference, like, the average response has been 32 minutes, which I think is pretty darn good. 93% have been less than 60 minutes, so, so I don't know, mean, median, average, I don't know, I don't want to go there. But having said that, it's, I mean, it's, it's really a great, been a great program, and it is providing not only assessment and safety planning, but supporting people in the community, in their homes, so they don't have to go to the emergency room, so they don't have to go into an institution. And, and the idea is to also provide continued follow-up and connections to services. We also have, and I'm not going to go too far into this, but we have residential and crisis homes. We have 38 beds in six homes throughout Wyndham, Windsor Counties. Here, we just have, we have Meadowview, we've got a home at Hilltop, Hilltop in Westminster. And these are all, these are very intensive recovery residents, pretty highly staffed. And in many cases, it's really keeping, it's supporting people who would other be, otherwise be institutionalized. And it's providing transitional care, meaning like up to two years, and the whole, what we say is live, learn, and leave. You know, you live, you learn life skills, you, you know, you learn all of this, and then you transition out, and it's just been, it's really, they've been really great programs. And, you know, have a whole range of services within them, including services that are, I would say, non-traditional, hearing voices, something called collaborative networking, there's some very unique, I think that came from Finland, there's some unique alternative approaches to supporting people that actually have really been incredibly successful and very effective. And so, those are, that's residential. And last but not least, Kindle Farm. That is a therapeutic school for boys in Townsend, Newfoundland. It's, we have 50 students there, grade two through 12, and these are kids who have intensive behavioral needs, developmental disability issues, a whole range of issues. And it's a really an amazing school that does have a hands-on experiential approach, very similar to what, I don't know if any of, you know, John Dewey's approach of that kind of experiential learning. And we, and aside from the academics and the literacy and all, and the curriculum and so forth, there's a lot of vocational pieces in there. There's a lot of vocational programs that I think are really pretty amazing. The maple sugaring is, is incredible, they've got 100 acres of, of land, they've got tractor certification, chainsaw certification. Oh, that was me. It was like, I got a minute on.
That was good.
There you go, no, it was good. I had, I have a nice Star Trek theme, but I thought, no, I'll just go with this. But anyway, sorry about that. So, chainsaw certification, driver's ed, culinary arts, some years ago, just a little bit pre-COVID, they won the Junior Iron Chef Award in Burlington, just really amazing. And they grow almost everything that they eat. And it is a farm, and it's, you know, organic farming, permaculture, they do, they have probably 70 activities. The kids do graduate, and they learn skills that, I mean, quite honestly, I like the chainsaw thing, I mean, I, I need that, I really need that skill, you know, I, 30 years.
Hire them.
What?
Hire them.
Yeah, I know, I know. And, and we do, actually, we connect with a lot of employers, and a lot of these young people, they go out and they get it, they have a job because they've already had that apprenticeship experience in the community. And, and they do graduate because we're licensed, the school is licensed through AOE. And just, you know, just for transparency, I think 13, 14 years ago, we, it became a program of HCRS because they were having some challenges, came to us, we supported the school. And so, it's been a great, great program that really supports, you know, the kids, it's just, it's, it's amazing. So, and so that's pretty much all I've got. I mean, certainly couldn't share a lot more, but I could probably go on forever, but that's a little bit about HCRS, so. I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. You guys are doing a lot of good work here and throughout the regions, so thank you for that. Select Board members, questions for Dr. Karabagakis? Elizabeth?
Thank you, Jenny. George, thank you for coming.
Sure.
And thank you for all the wonderful work that you do. You know, this community needs all your services so much, and you're the solution. Your, your people are the solution to many of our problems, both individually and collectively, and I appreciate it so much. We had a meeting the other day with the legislators, and they brought up the, the drug court. And mentioned that there were some things that you help, you can help participate in the drug court. And they're, they're having a couple of kinks working out the problem between Brattleboro and I think it was Woodstock, where they want to have the court.
Right.
But I wondered, are you, are you fully engaged in that process?
Oh, absolutely.
Are there supports that you need to do that work that you've identified?
Well, oh, bless you.
Thank you.
There might be. I, actually, I have been in conversation with, with Nader and Ian, and, you know, we have, so we have, we're fortunate, we have a representative on House Judiciary and Senate Judiciary, which is, which is really great, it's a great resource. And we do have, or actually, I shouldn't say we, although we're part of that collaboration, the Court Administrator's Office has been the applicant for a treatment court, which is a co-occurring court. It's a court that supports people with mental health and substance use issues because, as we all know, it's, it's kind of a packaged, I mean, it's, you know, that people, that's how it usually, how it is, and I, for many good reasons. And we, I have to say that the way it was written, the serve, the court proceedings and the actual treatment court, or drug court, if you will, treatment court is in Windsor County. It is open to Wyndham County residents, but, and here's the rub, they have to go to Windsor. And it can be a real, really just a great program because, you know, there's, you know, clinical supports, treatment, case management, intensive case management sometimes, you know, in, in the way I've described it, assessments and follow, just a whole range of services and supports. And, but someone has, from Brattleboro or whatever, Guilford, Vernon, has to go all the way up north, that's a problem. And that's particularly a problem for someone who may have, whether it's a DUI or may have other challenges that make transportation really difficult. So I've been, I have talked to Senator, to Nader and to, and Representative Goodnow around the fact that it would be great if we could actually have something where people can actually get supports here. A lot of it is resources, court resources, and, but I do, I, I'll definitely put some thought to how perhaps the Select Board could support that, or, you know, maybe that's more conversation.
Yeah, I mean, of course, I'm not volunteering the Brattleboro Select Board, but I just want to make sure that you're working through those with Nader.
Right.
And he appreciates that, I know. But it's, it's like, you know, whether the state needs to provide transportation? You know, it's like, either, either the judge comes here.
Right.
Or people go there, and it seems a hell of a lot easier for the judge to come here, but, you know, I'm not in charge, so.
Right, it's a challenge, but we're, no, we're definitely very, very aware of that, and we would, we would like to be able to have that be a resource for folks here because the alternative is sometimes not getting the resource. It becomes a huge obstacle and a barrier to people getting that support. And unfortunately, then, it might mean getting in more deeply involved with the criminal justice system, which doesn't help anyone, so.
And you were just mentioning before that kind of people with commingled issues, both drug and mental health problems. And so, does this, are you working and is the, the climate working to accept people with both issues?
Yes, absolutely. And even, and we made it very, because we've worked closely with the Court Administrator's Office on the grant, because we're going to be providing the services, but it has to come through the CA, you know, Court Administrator's Office. But in the grant, it's very specifically written that it's for people with co-occurring mental health and substance use issues because we do know when someone's depressed, when there's, someone's dealing with trauma, there's, whether it's self-medication, or there's a whole range of reasons and issues why people might be dealing with both, and absolutely, it's, it's critical. And it does take some expertise, and, you know, all our staff are co-occurring, I mean, they're trained in providing both mental health and substance use issues. That's something we've been doing for quite a long time, but it is part of that grant for sure.
Great, thank you.
I have just a couple more things.
About five minutes left.
Also, you were talking about a crisis center in, in, meeting people in crisis in their homes.
Right.
And so that they don't have to go to the emergency room and so forth.
Right.
And then, do you, it was mentioned that you might have a plan to have a crisis center outside of that?
No, there's no, there isn't going to be a crisis clinic or center. It's really the program and the model, and the idea is to really go to where people are, you know, whether, you know, it's, I mean, it could be in the school, it could be at home, it could be at Groundworks, it could be, I mean, it could be here, it could be really anywhere, anywhere other than the emergency room or on hospital grounds, actually. The new, this new enhanced mobile crisis team model that I was talking about.
And then, your facility at 51 Fairview or on Lyndon Street, would that be a place where someone who's on the Brattleboro streets and suffering can be, can be brought?
Absolutely, that could be. I mean, we do see, we, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure of the numbers, I think it's, it's fairly low, maybe like 15%, 20% of folks that we see in, in the offices. It's a pretty low number, it might even be less than that, but that's where our staff are located, where they do their documentation and so forth. But generally, even though we can see people in the office, we generally see them like outside of the office, and so.
That's interesting. And again, George, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Liz. Richard?
Well, George, I've just always been amazed at what a gem your organization is, and I've spent many years doing case management in Brattleboro, and I couldn't have done almost any of it without collaborating with people from your agency. And it's just an amazing experience to be able to have that kind of interlocking support, you know, and the people, I don't know where you find these people, but everybody I've ever, ever worked with has always been just amazing, you know, and done amazing work. And so I've always, it's just amazing to me. I do have one question, though, relating to the current situation in Brattleboro. You know, we're, we're hearing about people that are on the street, substance abuse and drugs and mental health issues, and then we always hear, there's no capacity, we don't have enough providers. Could you just address that issue from your perspective?
But no capacity?
I mean, I hear from people, and I don't know if this is like anecdotal or people are making it, but, okay, we get all these people on the street that need help, and then, but there doesn't seem to be the capacity in the community to, to provide the care for these people when they need it.
Right. Well, I think, you know, it's, it's very, I mean, it's definitely a complicated issue, but I can tell you, I mean, our staff are amazing, and I talk to them all the time. They are just, they do incredible work, the trauma, the stuff that they're dealing with, and they have big caseloads. You know, they have, they have some pretty big caseloads that are really a challenge to manage. And I do think, and then we do have also a workforce crisis because we, you know, we, you know, there's, there is a lot of turnover, you know, we just, you know, we've had staff who said, you know, after a few months, this is too much for me, this is too intense, I can't, I need to move on. And so, there are those challenges. I do think working together like there's, and I'm not sure if this is the official name, but there is a group, and many, many, many years ago, case managers from all the organizations would come together and have breakfast and, you know, and, and talk. And now, interestingly enough, there's something called, and I might have gotten it wrong, but I think it's called the Outreach League, that is a group of outreach staff coming together to sort of compare notes, to work together to, when, if, and I do think that kind of collaboration can help both increase capacity, but also acknowledge that, you know, if someone needs support, maybe we need to go to the AIDS Project, maybe we need to go to Turning Point, maybe we need to go to Project Connection Works or whoever because they have the ability or the capacity. It is going to be a challenge, and, and yet I do think the Situation Table is, is really making a difference. And in some cases, it's allowing people to go to their communities, which may not be this community, we go to back, go to a community, but doing it the right way with support, with connection, with, it's not, you know, here's, you know, here's your bus ticket and you're gone. No, those, that is not acceptable. It's allowing, it's really connecting people to their resources and supports, wherever that might be, and that takes a little work. And, but there are capacity issues, and I think those challenges are real for sure.
Thanks, George.
Anyway.
The board members with comments, I'd like to hear from the public as well, Franz.
Just a quick, a quick question, George. You know, the, the embedded clinicians with our police department have been so important, so effective over the past couple of years. I'm just wondering about their funding sources. I understand that they're grant-supported, and I'm wondering how that looks going into the future.
Well, we do have the two, and I think we're, and we're hiring for a third, and we're sort of keep, keeping our fingers crossed, that's been a challenge, finding that third. But they've been VDH funded through Vermont Department of Health. It was a grant that actually John and the town has initiated. We picked it up, we collaborated, worked together, and it is VDH funding. I can tell you, I mean, I started this program in Bellows Falls 23 years ago on kind of a song and a dime and a little bit here and a little kind of patchwork, you know, like trying to pull it all together. trying to pull it all together. And we've been, we've actually done really well across the board, but it is, it's coming out of our general fund, if you will. It's coming out of HCRS and has been. Now, what we've got here has been VDH-funded, and I do think, long-term, I do think it would be important to continue to locate, to identify VDH, you know, Vermont Department of Health or state funds, knowing that the impact, it's not just on the Department of Health, it's not just on, you know, paying for the retreat inpatient beds or the emergency room or Department of Corrections, it's the whole state of Vermont. We are saving the state dollars by supporting people in the community with those social services as opposed to very costly institutional care. So I do think we're going to have to, we're going to have to think about a, a really strategic, you know, we're going to have to think about a strategy moving forward to continue funding or, you know, finding sustainable revenue to support this program and programs like it, so.
Is there a timeline that we're up against? I mean, is there some kind of running out deadline?
I'll tell you honestly, I'd have to, I think it was two years or three, two to three years. Oh, no, yeah, I think it was a three-year grant, and we're in the first year. I'd have to double-check that, but, so we still have, we still have two-plus years, but it's never too early to start planning, so.
Yep. Thank you. Peter?
So maybe some of you are aware, some of you are not aware. I know George is aware. I've worked with HCRS for, I think as long as George has been at HCRS in some capacity, one way or another. I have a sister who's developmentally delayed. HCRS is sort of, they're her caseworker a lot, and I work through it. I've seen the struggles that George goes through with, with keeping, keeping good, qualified people in place, because it's really hard work, really hard work. And I guess the fascinating, I think, I've seen under, under George's watch is, there's the old saying, adapt or die, and, and your sort of flexibility on adapting and seeing the geography and laying it out and making it work and collaborating with others and pulling in other agencies, where others, and I've seen it before in other agencies, are just, they kind of just want their own piece of the pie, but, you know, you inviting them in and realizing like, you know, more, the more we bring in and the more we're able to kind of lean on other people, the better the situation is. So my hat's off to you, and I just, I just wanted you to know that at least if nobody else recognized that, I recognize the, the hard work that HCRS does every day, from Kindle Farm, Drew Gradinger and that whole crew out there, all that work that they do is just, it's not unnoticed by me, and certainly not, it's appreciated more the more that I can express.
Thanks, Peter. Well, thank you. All right, let's hear from members of the public. Yep? If you could introduce yourself.
Amanda, Brattleboro. I've been wanting to meet you for a long time, George.
Oh, my God.
Thank you for coming.
Amanda Thibodeau.
Oh, a little louder?
No, 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 I was just giving you a last name.
Oh, Amanda Ellis Berber.
There are a lot of Amandas. I know that we know you, but not everyone does.
Okay. Hi, audience. What is your crisis number?
Well, there's two, there's, it's 1-800-622-4235. Oh, by the way, it's really nice to see you. It's been a long time, yeah, from the farmer's market. Yeah, I'm sorry, try that again. 1-800-622-4235 is our 24/7 crisis number. But I also want to say that we have 9-88, which, and that, in the, it's not going to be too far down the line, where 9-88 is going to be the crisis number that you can call. It's staffed by designated agency staff, who I can tell you, we've had, actually, some of our staff have actually called, kind of testing the water. They are amazing. They're actually Northwest Counseling and Northeast Kingdom designated staff who are trained like ours, and they are really great. And that number will get you to someone, and then it immediately patches, kind of seamlessly patches into if someone is needed. I mentioned, and I actually didn't get into it too far, but to access services, we have our Access Navigator program, and that number is, and that one I don't use as much, it's one, it's 855-220, not, let's see, 9428. And that provides same-day services to support people getting an intake, to get registered into services. And then, you know, we'll get connected to a clinician, case manager, or a care coordinator through that access navigation number. So those are kind of the, the numbers and.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Other members of the public with questions? Okay. See you in none. Thank you, George, for the presentation. Thank you for all the work that you and your staff do in the community, and we look forward to continue collaborating with you.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next item of business, and it's a combo platter. So we're going to do the Living Memorial Park project update, maintenance building contingency. But before we get to that, Carol, I think we should do the softball lighting project.
Cool.
That was pulled from the consent agenda.
Right.
And I think it's kind of like precursor to considering the contingency. That seem reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening. So to, this is a item that's within the Generational Improvement Project, and we put it out to bid last spring, and at the time, we thought it was best to not accept any, all, any of the bids and to rebid the project in January. So we put the project back out to bid, and we did it a little bit differently, where the town would purchase the equipment from Musco Lighting through Sourcewell. And Sourcewell is a program which you're probably all familiar with. It's more of a nationwide program and where it's already been vetted, it's already been put out to bid. And sports field, the sports field lighting company that, that Sourcewell has is Musco Lighting. And Musco Lighting is what we use on the, at the skating rink, at the upper ball field, at the lower ball, not at the upper ball field yet, at the, a lower ball field and at West River Park. So when we put it out to bid, we were just asking bidders to, for demolition and installation. So we received four bidders, this, as the memo is in your packet, ranging from $190,598 to $248,980. And that was just for the demolition and installation. So before you this evening is, we're seeking your, your endorsement to move forward with entering into a contract with Cleveland Electric to do that installation work, and that we purchased the equipment through Sourcewell using the vendor of Musco Lighting.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. And the total cost for this is $347,049?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the board on this one? Liz?
Hey, Carol, thank you. I just have one question. Is this, this is part of the generational improvements?
It is part of the.
So it's part of that whole loan bond program?
Correct. Correct. And I would like to highlight two programs or agencies, if you will, or that donated to this particular portion of the project. We received a $75,000 grant from the Vermont Community Foundation, Withington Fund, but that's all part of the whole budget that's laid out before you. And I recently received a $15,000 pledge from the Men's Softball League. So that's, you know, I, I'd be, big kudos going out to them, because those are the users that, you know, at the biggest benefit of this.
Thank you.
So I think it's real important to point that out.
Carol, I think you're amazing in your tentacles to find private grants and support. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. I just want to make sure I understand. So we're talking about $90,000 that was raised, essentially as grant funds, grants and donations. The original budget for this line was $300,000, and we're able to do it for 347. You said you had an unsuccessful round of bidding earlier, and this was the second attempt at it. But with that $90,000 contribution, we're able to bring it in under budget effectively?
It's still going to cost us $347,000, but we were, yeah.
Got it. Okay. So we're $47,000 over budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for clarifying.
And all that, all that funding is included in the breakdown that was given to you in your packet.
Yep. Great. Other questions from the board on this particular matter, the softball lighting? Yep.
Hi, Carol.
Hi, Franz.
So just a, why isn't this just part of the contingency plan already? I mean, if, I noticed there are some other items in this, you know, in the list of expenditures, et cetera, that we're a little bit over what was anticipated. So I'm just wondering, as a general budgeting principle, when do you have to come back to us and say, hey, how about an extra $47,000, or when it just comes out of the contingency funds?
So this particular item had not been approved by the board, the hundred, the 347. So I'm really coming to you for the whole package, not just what's over. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but it raises other ones. So this was not part of the original proposal for the generational improvements?
It was part of the original proposal.
Yeah?
But when I came before you last spring, it did not include the softball field project. We chose to hold that at that time.
I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Could you remind us, when you came to us last spring, what we did approve?
Everything but the softball field lights.
Okay.
So you, you know, you approved the, the roof project at the skating rink, the, all the other projects that we'll be talking about here in the next couple of minutes, which is, you know, the dehumidification and the refrigeration at the skating rink, the lighting improvements, the electrical upgrades, the fire alarm system at the skating rink, the, the maintenance building, and the Quanah Shelter parking.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, John.
So just to clarify, Franz, so even though you approved the, the whole project, the scope of the project, when we have an actual contract or purchase that needs to be awarded, that's when it comes back to the board for approval for that particular, like in this case, for Cleveland Electric, so.
Okay.
May I address the board?
Yes, I will allow it. Hi, Steve. Steve Horton, project engineer, project manager. What are we talking?
Consultant.
Yeah. All of those things, sure, that's great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Horton, and I just wanted to answer Franz's question a little bit further in regards to the contingency. And at this point, it's, it's a matter of accounting as well, because I think you've probably seen the budget. But prior to this approval tonight, and then, of course, the discussion on the maintenance building interior, we are still showing $285,000 in savings on the overall project. So if you were to approve the softball lighting package tonight, that would still, still leave us with basically $285,000 in contingency savings.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Any more discussion on the softball lighting element of this? Okay. We don't have a prepared motion, but I could cobble one together, if you're interested. On page 12, in the last paragraph, you'll find all of the words that you need, I think. We could even throw some dollars on it. Liz?
I move that the Select Board contract with Cleveland Electric to install the new lighting system at Living Memorial Park Upper Softball Field, and that the town purchase the necessary equipment for the project through Sourcewell for a total of $347,049.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't forget about you, don't worry. I just wanted to make sure we got the motion out on the floor. Okay, Select Board, let's hear from the public on this before we go ahead and take some action. Members of the public who wish to speak on the softball lighting element of this project. Kate?
Steve O'Connor, Brattleboro. I'm really sorry, this is going to sound dumb, but the document that we have on the Select Board packet says the softball lighting original, in the original column, it says $300,000, and in the current, it says $347,000. But if this wasn't in the original package, why is there a $300,000 budget item in the column that says original? I could totally be misunderstanding. I'm sort of confused what we're talking about. Because if it was, it should be a zero if it wasn't what was.
No, it definitely was in the original plan for generational improvements. It's just we haven't had a contract to award for this particular piece of it, and so that would have been our action tonight. Is there any misunderstanding on my part there?
No, I think you have, and we were leaving that $300,000 there as a placeholder that we know that that was part of the project, and we didn't want to throw that into a contingency because it really had a placeholder of the upper softball field.
Yeah, very good. Okay. Other members of the public with questions on the softball lighting contract? Okay. Board, any final questions on that? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve a contract with Cleveland Electric to install the new lighting system at Living Memorial Park Upper Softball Field, and that the town will purchase the necessary equipment for the project through Sourcewell, and the total project cost is a sum of $347,049. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 5-0. Okay, softball lighting done.
Softball lighting done.
Great. Let's move on to the next one, which is about the maintenance building and the use of some contingency funds.
Right. And, you know, also part of this presentation this evening was to talk, because we're at the crossroads, and where we are at with all the projects that are within the generational improvements. So I just, I have them broken down into six different categories that I just want to briefly highlight, and I will save the maintenance building for last.
Okay, very good.
So I'm going to start with the refrigeration upgrade and the dehumidification. We're at the point where all the submittals for both of those projects for the equipment have been submitted, reviewed, and they have been approved and are in production. And ARC, which, American Refrigeration Company, is the company that will be doing the work, which will be doing the installation. And that installation is expected to start in late May, early June, with wrapping it up in late September, so that we will be ready for the '25, '26 winter season. The upper softball lights, as we just talked about, that project will start after the softball season. So that project will start about the first week of September. In the meantime, we've got to get, you know, we've got quite a lead time on getting, getting that equipment. So as I've always said, these programs will be as least disruptive to programming as possible, so we want to keep our summer program on task. The Quanah Shelter parking lot is 90%, complete. Bernie LaRocque and Sons did that work in the fall. There's some fine landscaping and signage to be done this spring, and then that project will be complete. The skating roof replacement, Melanson's completed that work in September of 2024. The work has been inspected, and the warranty is in hand.
Nice.
And we had a great winter and no issues. So that was, that was a positive thing. As far as code improvements, that relates to the skating rink, which includes the fire alarm system upgrade and electrical and lighting upgrade. And J. King is expected to start their work on Monday, as John told you earlier this evening. The rink closes on Sunday, they'll start on Monday. So their work will start on Monday, and again, they'll be wrapping that project up in the fall, so that we'll be on task for opening next season on time. So the big reason that we are here this evening is to talk about the maintenance building. First, want to bring you to where we're at and where we're at at crossroads, and we have to, you know, need to take, decide if we're going to turn left or we're going to turn right. With that being said, all seasons started their work in August 2024. With that being said, all seasons started their work in August twenty twenty-four. The building envelope has been completed, and currently, they're working on the, on the interior. The roofers should, were on site this week, and that project is moving along nicely. But where we are tonight is, the question before you is, we're at the point where we need to, not only, there's the interior, but then there's the interior walls that we would, we are asking for a change order. The request coming before you is to put up the walls on the, in the interior of the building that would include a restroom facility, heating and, heating and cooling. And that we feel that this is the time to move forward. This is the time when we have a contingency, as Steve Horton mentioned over, earlier, over two hundred and eighty thousand. If we move forward with this, with this change order, we will still have a contingency of over two hundred thousand, two hundred and six thousand. I know earlier on in this process, we talked about at a later date, we would put those interior walls in. We feel now is the time. Prices are only gonna increase, and budgets are only gonna get more difficult. So we feel at this time, with the contingency that we have, that we would like, we're requesting your permission to move forward with this change order.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Questions from the board? Liz?
Hey Carol, I remember when the project was originally discussed, and I guess it was just mostly cinder block maintenance building? Is that what it's composed of?
No, it's, it's, no, it, it's, for, for lack of a better term, it's a stick building, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the interior walls, just in what you've proposed here, just are, are finishers, and it makes the building more usable. So are there additional uses and activities that can take place in this building that originally, you know, without this couldn't be done? Or were, were we always anticipating that it would be an add-on? It's just that now you're saying now's the time.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We are always anticipated, whether it would be this year or next year or as we, you know, worked our way through. And, and we have done, you know, working with Steve Horton, he can tell you, been very on top of the budget all along the way, and we've been very frugal in making sure that this project is coming in underbid and well within the budget that we have here. And this, whether we do it now or in three years, you know, eventually, we would want, we would need those walls. You know, one is
And so is it being constructed now, and it makes all the sense to do it all at once?
It does make sense to do it now because, you know, the company that is building the, constructing the building, they're already mobilized, they're already in place, and now, now's the time. Versus coming back to you in future years.
I'm all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Franz?
Thank you, Daniel. So I'm still curious, though, about if we don't do this work now, what can we use the building for compared to what we can use it for if we do the work now? I, I don't recall hearing that, you know, there were limitations on how the building would be used or in, you know, it's just, I guess what I'm getting at is, why, why was it okay not to include this as part of the original plan and put it off to the future? Of what use is this building in its current configuration as opposed to with this new work being done?
Right. So let's just use this room as an example. When, when the maintenance building is done, it would be a big open space. And the park supervisor would be having his office right in the middle of the big open space. And the bathroom would be right in the middle of this big open space. And then there was, there's a small break room. So right now, you know, all the, everybody would have a break rate in the middle of the big open space versus being able to section those rooms off so that, that we would have a complete project when this is done. And to answer your, your first question there, Franz, as to why not from the onset? And it was to make sure that we were gonna have all the funds to at least get the walls up and the roof over our head. And then if we had to wait down the road, because it'd be a totally functional building, it's just there's pieces that will allow it to be more functional for staffing.
Thank you, Carol. My recollection is that, like, the maintenance building part of this project was somewhat, I don't think controversial is quite the right word, but like, it was, you know, it was debated as to whether the expense for that part of the project was warranted, and, you know, some felt that it was too much money. And so was this an attempt to kind of really keep the project kind of as frugal as possible?
Exactly. We've been frugal, you know, along the way, making sure that we're getting the project done and still meeting our needs. And a lot, a lot in the beginning, people were, had a lot of questions of why is this project so important? And there's the piece that I don't want people to miss, that forget, and that is, it's was more than just a building. It was the heartbeat of the entire park, because that's where all the electrical, electrical came into the park. That's where all the communications came into the park. So it began, when we did this project, it was more than just a maintenance building. It was also addressing the electrical as well, which was a big chunk of this project.
Thank you. Other questions? Members of the public with questions? Okay. Select would kind of get a motion? Yep.
All right. So to approve an added value change order in the amount of seventy-nine thousand and nine dollars for the completion of the interior spaces of the maintenance building presently under construction.
Great. Thank you. Peter's made a motion to approve an added value change order in the amount of seventy-nine thousand and nine dollars for the completion of the interior spaces of the maintenance building presently under construction. Any final questions, discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
All right. It is seven fifty. I think we should take a five-minute break just now rather than start on the next item. So we'll come back just before eight o'clock. Next item is item C, the vacant buildings ordinance, a third reading. Sue Fillion, Steve Hayes, here to present from the planning department about this ordinance.
Thank you. So I wanted to remind the select board that the discussion of tools to deal with vacant buildings first began, began about a year ago. It was February of twenty twenty-four. So some of you were actually not on the select board at that time. And at the time, the town was really struggling with the former Sporty's and Friendly's buildings, which have since been torn down. And so we were trying to think of tools that could more effectively address those situations. And planning staff, Steve specifically, brought before the select board a review of vacant ordinance, vacant building ordinances from around the state, and it's a tool that's used throughout the country. And at that time, we discussed what the goals of such an ordinance would be if we were to do one here in Brattleboro. And the then-select board directed us to work on an ordinance that would address issues of blight, public nuisance, and loss of municipal revenues. And the ideal outcome of any ordinance would be to stimulate new commercial or residential development. And so this is our third reading, fourth time discussing vacant buildings, but the third reading of the ordinance. Steve is gonna speak to some of the adjustments that we made based on yours and the public comments when we last met in the beginning of December. But I first wanted to take an opportunity to say, at that meeting, there was some concern expressed by a member of the public that this ordinance would apply to small residential properties. And that's intentional. Like, I want to be clear, like, we intentionally want it to apply to those properties because they are some of the chronic problems that we've been seeing. You know, obviously, Sporty's and Friendly's were the big ones. They've been torn down. We think this tool actually was kind of, they knew this was coming or that, that it could possibly have been adopted in the fall, and it did get them to work on it. But we have about seven to ten small, single-family residential properties that, you know, are a problem. Some have been used for squatting. Some are in such poor disrepair, disrepair that the animals are getting into it and causing problems for neighbors. And sometimes, you know, they're just unintended, or they're intentionally left vacant and in disrepair. Oftentimes, nobody wants to put them into probate or open up an estate to deal with them. So our zoning administrator told me today that he's been dealing with some of these properties for sixteen years, and the town currently doesn't have an effective tool to do that. So again, we intentionally do want it to apply to, you know, we estimate there's up to ten properties that are chronic problems, that we don't have a tool. We've got the rental registry and, and other tools that can address that kind of thing. But when they're, you know, when there's a sole owner and not being used for rental, there's, there's just nothing for us. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, who will address some of the changes.
So at the, at the previous meeting that this was discussed in December, there were a few comments that we specifically took back with us and, and worked on in the changes that you're seeing in the, the version that's in front of you now. One of those was in relation to what Sue was just discussing. While we did intend for it to apply to the actually genuinely problematic small residential as well as large commercial and, and everything in between, there were some situations that were brought up that are sympathetic and that may have potentially fallen outside of how we were defining the way that fees could be waived at that time. So we specifically reworked that language to make sure that there were additional explicit ways that you could be exempted from having to pay fees for twelve months and have that be renewed for a second and a third year, potentially. And those were, if you had a documented renovation or demolition or some sort of major work on the property that you could show was being done in good faith and on a rational timetable, that we would be able to waive the fees while that was happening. that we would be able to waive the fees while that was happening, because that's an understandable reason for something to be temporarily vacated. Additionally, if you are making a good faith effort to actively market that property to try to fill it, be that a tenant or a new buyer for the property, we've identified a few different ways that you could demonstrate that that's being done. So if there's a listing, we wanted to see that the listing was within six months of the date, or had been dropped in price within six months of the date that the exemption was being asked for, to avoid having the exemption cover just simply marketing the property, or listing the property for an unreasonable amount that the market is not able to cover, and leaving it at that. But we've, we've allowed for the property tax valuation of the parcel or the property, as well as any professionally-prepared valuation that a property owner might want to bring to us instead to count towards that exemption. So we think we've allowed for sufficient flexibility there. And one additional exemption category that we have included that was not there previously is to explicitly mention that if there's a court order that something be vacated, that of course, that is not something that we would be enforcing on for the duration of that. And in addition to that work on the exemptions, we additionally, we heard some comments from the board and from public in the last meeting about how we determine what a vacant property is, and some concerns that just basing it on 75% of the units in a structure might be limiting in situations where not quite that many are vacant, but one very large, or perhaps a few very large, units are vacant, that it might have the cumulative impact that's the same or more than how we defined it. So we've added an alternative for that, to specifically be able to make a finding that something is a vacant building if half the units or more are vacant, but they make up at least three-quarters of the floor area of a structure. And so we think that that is a sufficiently broad way to be able to catch those scenarios as well without blunting the formula down to a point where it might impact downtown properties where natural market conditions can cause things to be vacant from time to time in a way that we wouldn't want to be punitive, because we don't think that would be helpful. And that's something that had come up at previous meetings as well. So those were the, the major changes that we made in response to comments that we had received at the previous meeting.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Sue. Anything more to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the memo addresses the elephant in the room, which is the Home Depot situation. You know, in, in our view, this ordinance never started as a way to address that specific building, and so we're still of the opinion that, you know, it's, we weren't looking for a way through this ordinance to deal with it. It is a property that where rent is being paid. It's a long-term commercial lease, which is problematic, and I think we'd prefer that if, if that is, you know, trying to include it in this ordinance is, it's not necessarily, it's, as far as we know, it is buttoned up, it's not a public safety concern. Sure, we'd love to see it used in a different way, we'd love to see it rented, and bringing, bringing in revenue that way, but our preference would be to be directed to look at a different solution from that than rather trying to put it into this ordinance.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. Okay, board, questions, comments, reactions? Lizbeth.
I think this is very thorough. I thank you. I, I see the logic to all the items that you addressed since the last meeting, and I think it's a great idea, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you. Other board members? Okay. Yeah, thanks for pointing out this, our fourth time talking about it. This, you know, this has been a long time in the works, and I think that the various readings has helped us get to a tool that's going to be useful and also is responsive to concerns of, you know, community members. So I appreciate the work, and I'm expecting to vote in favor of it shortly. Other board members?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt the changes to the Brattleboro Code of Ordinances, Chapter Eight, Article Six, Vacant Buildings.
Great. Thank you for that motion. Let's hear from the public.
Tom Mosakowski. Thanks for all the work on this and department staff. I just have some clarifying questions, and then, for my sake at least, and then maybe one or two points to, like, advocate for. I think the questions can be answered really quickly. Can I just ask them and then maybe get an answer?
No. Ask them all, and then we'll see where we're at.
What about buildings being constructed?
Okay.
Second question. Who will, who is the building safety enforcer, officer? Who will be the building safety officer? Who will be the enforcer of it, basically? Will unpaid fees lead to a tax sale, like unpaid property taxes do? Does the required liability insurance cover the reimbursement of potential fire department responses to fires? Like, I don't know what liability insurance actually fully covers, and just wondering if it would cover. Yeah, if GMP has to replace power lines because they get damaged, or more municipally speaking, if the fire department has to spend resources with the fire, putting that out. And then, let's see, the memo mentions, and this is something I've thought of too for a while, that it'd be great to consider vacant lands, because that checks off some of the boxes, not necessarily the, the concerns with, you know, fires or unsafe building conditions, because it's land, there's no buildings, but as far as unproductive space, it'd seem like the closer that is to downtown, maybe the stronger the argument is that that's unproductive space and not good for, like, the vitality of our community. So I'd advocate that that's something that the board should ask staff to look into as well, and develop an ordinance or for. The memo spoke something, if I understood it correctly, saying that it seems like in order to do that, charter and statute needs to change to allow a land value tax, but from my perspective, it seems like a similar ordinance, like the one written, obviously not with the things relevant to buildings, but registration fees and potential fines could apply to land, and no statute or charter change would be needed. Then my last point is that we already have a vacant building ordinance. Chapter Eight, Section Eight Three, however, all it says is just vacant as a word and how that's not allowed. So it's just more of a general question of, like, have ordinances changed from decades ago, such that now they need to be six pages in order to be enforceable and valid and good, whereas in the past, they could just say, like, hey, vacant buildings are a public nuisance, and they can be fined?
Great. Thanks, Tom. Let's address that last question first. That seems pretty foundational. So the question was, don't we already have a vacant building ordinance? I'm assuming the answer is no?
I, I think the answer is no. I think that I'd have to pull up that section of the ordinance, and I think that might be under, yeah, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. Maybe we can address the other ones, and I can look up Chapter Eight.
Yes, okay, great.
See if I can give you an answer. I might not be able to, we might have to speak to Bob.
Were you guys tracking them, or do you want me to feed them back to you?
I think I was tracking them well enough.
Okay, let's see what we do.
So for the third and fourth question, that were about the liability insurance, and maybe you could.
Tax sale.
Okay. Those, I think we would, we would just say that we need to check with our town attorney to make sure that we understand that, and, and I wouldn't want to misconstrue the actual impact of those. But for the first two questions, should this or would this apply to buildings under construction? It would not, is my understanding, but we do have, I would say, adequate, I should be addressing this to the board.
No, you're good, you're good.
I, I would say we have adequate language in our land use regulations to deal with the time that it is reasonable to actually construct a building, because if it's not substantially complete within, I believe it's two years of the permit being vested, then it is potentially a zoning violation. So I think we deal with that already. And then, I am now blanking on what your second question was.
The building safety officer?
Oh, right. So that could be a variety of people. We've listed out the roles that could potentially be appointed by the select board to fill out without volunteering him. I think it would likely be Brian Bannon, our zoning administrator, but it's intended to be defined in a way that allows for several different people to be able to fill that role, much like we already do with the health, health officer. And then as far as the land value tax or land value fee, however you wanted to phrase that, I think it's a great thing to look into. I know we included that in our memo. And as for the specific questions on what legal statutory change or charter change we might need to be able to do that, I, we don't know at the moment. We would need to research that as, as its own topic, the way that we did with this, consult with the town attorney, the way that we did in this process, and I think it would be a great thing to look into in, in the way that we did for this particular tool. But it's possible that we could structure it in a similar way that wouldn't need any specific changes.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Liz?
I feel very strongly that we should not have a punitive ordinance for vacant land. The purpose of this ordinance is for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I don't, and we have a variety of tools to encourage development on vacant land, and even grants are available if it's a brownfield, but to tell people what to do with their property, I don't think is anything that the town in Brattleboro wants to step their toes into. To, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community is what this ordinance is all about, and I'm all for it.
Okay. And we do not have any vacant land stuff in this ordinance, so that's something for a future select board to consider, of which you may be one voice. Let's hear from another member of the public, and Sue, I'll come back to that question. So I think we have Dick on his iPad. Good evening.
Good evening. Question, I was looking through, I couldn't find it, it's probably there, but what about a property that's tied up in an estate? And there are issues with an estate that are dragging on, and they can drag on for years. How is that handled with this ordinance? Thank you.
Yeah. So that, that situation, it would be, it would be subject to this ordinance and pay the vacant building fee unless there was good cause to waive it. There's lots of properties like that, and sometimes it's because whoever's in the estate can't make decisions, don't want to sell it, are dealing with a hoarder, or hoarded property and don't want to go through it. So they all do affect the neighborhoods, and some of them are left vacant for years upon years, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other members of the public, or do you want to come back to that larger question?
Yeah, I can come back to the, the question about the Chapter Eight, mentioning vacant. So there's not enough teeth there to kind of enforce on that, it's pretty vague. At least this ordinance, the proposal, has some clear standards about what you need to do to, to secure the building, and if you're not doing that, then, you know, you're subject to the fine, but just being vacant, yeah, there's no teeth there.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this question? Sir?
I'm Nick King, West Brattleboro. Is there a way to report a vacant property if we've got a complaint?
Is that the entirety of the question?
Yeah, yeah. How do we report one?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, we take, the planning department takes all sorts of complaints that would then get investigated and enforced upon if need to be.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public with questions on this item? Okay. Board members? Liz made a motion earlier, I think, unless I'm...
Yes, I did.
Losing my mind, which is possible. Yeah. And it was to adopt the changes to the Brattleboro Code of Ordinances, Chapter Eight, Article Six, Vacant Buildings. Are you ready for that question?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero.
Thank you.
We have the beginnings of an ordinance, I guess. 60 days from now, we'll know if we have an ordinance. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Thanks, Steve. Next item up for discussion is about bridge number 54, and Daniel Tyler, Director of Public Works, is going to join us at the presenter's table. John, did you want to speak to any of this as well, or is it all Dan?
I, I think, yeah, I'll just say that we, you had a conversation about this at your meeting before last, and Gary LaRoche from V-Trans was here to explain the changes that he has been able to make in the project, and I believe the board asked us to go back and look at, you know, kind of what are the implications of signing this finance and maintenance agreement, and Dan has looked into that and put together a memo, and I'm sure he'd be, he's ready to discuss that, so.
Thanks, John. Hi, Dan.
Hi. So, yeah, the, the finance and maintenance agreement that goes along with the project is pretty much a canned agreement that goes along with any project that has federal funding. So we recently signed one for the paving projects that are going to happen in town. They're, they're pretty frequent, you know, they're pretty common. There's a lot of information in there that it's like, when the project's complete, we'll maintain our portions of it. As the project goes on, we'll permit them to use the municipality's property, to put up signs, detours, all that kind of stuff. I think the biggest, the biggest thing in this one is it's a, our share of it's a larger sum of money than it typically is. Gary found the innovative development program and was able to reduce the town's cost share to 5% on the engineering and the construction of the project. The right-of-way acquisition portion will remain at 10% because that doesn't fall in that, that funding. So Gary provided a total project cost estimate of $13,576,755.04. That, that estimate is kind of this moment in time. Those five, 5% share for the engineering and construction, as well as the 10% for the estimated right-of-way acquisition, leaves the town with a cost share of $681,337.75. What we don't know at this point is when this project's going to happen. So likely costs aren't going to go down. You know, our cost would increase with the cost of the project, and there's some language in the, the finance and maintenance agreement that allows the town to opt out. There's, there's a couple examples on the second page of the memo, and we flip-flop the situations, so they're not actually correct. The first one says if it's, if it goes up 49%, we can back out. It should be if, if the cost exceeds a 50% increase, the town has the opportunity to back out, and they would lose our share of the engineering and the right-of-way acquisition to that point. So if you, if you use the numbers Gary presented, and the project went up over $20,365,000, we could request that we could back out, and we'd be on the hook for 5% of the engineering and 10% of the right-of-way acquisition, which would be about $60,000. If the cost is between the current estimate and that 50% number, and we were to back out, we'd be on the hook for all of the engineering costs to that point. So that, that million-dollar estimate that Gary had, I can't imagine it's going to go up more than 50%, but there's not, you know, there's not a, there's not an estimated date at this point. They basically want to... know, there's not a, there's not an estimated date at this point. They basically want to produce a shovel-ready project and stick it on a shelf until there's money in the budget for it.
Great. Thanks, Dan. And so we've been asked to sign this finance and maintenance agreement. And that is really the question before the board tonight. Will we sign? I just want to kind of check for clarification. Like, I could have sworn when Gary was presenting the project, that the cost estimates, it's not like they're based on like this year's prices, right? There's no assumption that like, we'll get it for this year's prices. Isn't it sort of based on kind of a projection over a couple of years?
So, so V-Trans works everything in unit costs, and they have estimating tools that they use that are probably based on the last couple of years. And that's what they use for estimating a project. So, I mean, they, they present it as this is the current estimate.
Okay. Okay. All right. Board members? Elizabeth?
I just want to remind everybody that, you know, at first, V-Trans asked us, well, first of all, we often deal with state agencies. And, you know, the wastewater and water people are great. They give us money at no interest, and they're, you know, they want us to do this work. V-Trans has these 5% and 10%, which I think are very harsh. But I was, you know, first they asked us for $500,000. Then they came back and asked us for probably a million dollars more. And luckily, my colleagues joined me in just saying no. And then Gary found this money through, also, we talked to our senator about it. So that was all very helpful and very appreciative. I just, I just want everybody to know that your select board saved you a lot of money by just saying no. And now, I just, I wanted to wait to have this discussion because we are obligating the town for a lot of money. And it's, as I said, different than the wastewater money and so forth. So we'll be on the hook for a lot. And then, you know, we don't know actually what the amount is. This is an estimate. And we saw what happened the last time that V-Trans came back with an estimate. So I'm grateful that they worked on the numbers and got it down to the extent that they have. But I just want us all to be very clear that we are signing an agreement for a not-agreed-upon sum. And we all have to be comfortable with that. And I am comfortable because, you know, there's a certain amount of trust that we have built up with working with V-Trans and having them value-engineer things to our benefit. But I just want everybody to know that this is a big deal. And we all, this select board takes this responsibility very seriously. And so I understand the caveats for getting out, and the memo was a little bit wrong about that. But I'm comfortable with signing it, even though I know that this is a very serious means that we're encumbering the town of Brattleboro financially.
Great. Thank you. Richard?
I think it's a really good project, and we've done a lot of work here. But listening, it's like, we're, we're going to sign an agreement for a price that we sort of know what it is. And we might know, or not really have a great idea when it's going to happen.
Right.
Okay. So, I know, when I think about those kind of statements, it kind of scares me a little that the town's going to be on the hook for money that we could lose, potentially, without getting anything done. So there's, there's a risk here. So one of my questions is, I mean, it sounds, the state can't give you an exact date, but can they give you a list of priorities or projects that are ahead of us, or some kind of list, so we can at least get a vague idea of, you know, when, when this possibly could happen?
So they spent an astronomical amount of money on the flooding last year, which pushed all the projects out significantly. I, I don't believe there's a date. I think, so ultimately, it's our bridge, right? And they, the state inspects the bridge for us. Right now, it's in satisfactory condition, but the rating's not great. I think it was a six, maybe. It's not going to get any better. So I think the risk of not doing it is, the condition of that bridge declines, there's not a project there, we don't have any support from the state or the federal government. And the whole bill, the whole $10 million falls on the town to replace the bridge. Because if the condition drops, then the federal government steps in and says, you need to fix this. And it's all on us. So it locks us in the queue. There's $515,000 allocated from back when they gave us that original half-a-million-dollar estimate in the capital budget for the match. And, you know, I suspect we'd have plenty of time to budget the remainder.
Yep. Thanks, Dan. Other questions? Peter, then Franz?
Yeah. So I think, you know, to what Liz said, you know, I, I agree with the project. I think it's something that has to be done. As you just pointed out, and one of the points I was going to make is like, this project's not going to go away. It's only, it's only going to get worse. We stood our ground, and we came, they came back with, with something we can live with. That was this. I think if it had come before us and it was this then, we would have started the project, right? Am I incorrect? So I think just, we're just sort of circular talking here a little bit, and probably just need to kind of get this thing signed, get it locked in. Other than astronomical crazy costs, we should be good to go. And with time to budget for it. So, yeah. I mean, that's kind of, if only we had somebody who lived nearby who could speak to it directly.
Can you help out building it, please? All right. Sorry. Franz?
Thank you, Daniel. So, based on everything that's been said, I think we have a pretty good understanding of this. The one thing I'd like to have is maybe a number, or at least close to a number, of what our upside risk is. If the costs balloon, we would be committed to participate up until the cost went up 50%. Then we could bail out at a reduced cost. So what's that actual, if, if things went up to the, say, 50% limit, and we were still obligated to pay, how much money would we be on the hook for? I'm thinking it's around a million dollars, but I just haven't seen a specific number.
If we went through with the project?
If, yeah, if, if it was 50%, and we went through, and we went through with it. What's the, what's the top number that we're committing ourselves to right now?
So if it, if it went up 50%, it'd be a $20 million project. So we'd be committing ourselves to
Three.
An, an extra $334,000.
Right. So it'd be right around, just be a hair over a million dollars. That, if we approve this tonight, then somewhere down the road, they could come to us and say, give us our million dollars, and we'd be obligated to do that. But that's the highest risk that we would face based on our action tonight.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Yep. Great. Okay. Let's hear from members of the public. Yes?
Senator Smith?
Hi, Dan.
This project is right in my backyard.
Literally.
I really think that it's, it's going to be in my side yard. I'm all for it. I think that it needs to happen. I think that we need to sign something sooner than later. We have been at meetings for over two years trying to get this signed. I don't think putting it off is going to make it any better. It's definitely not going to make it any cheaper. And that bridge is not getting any better. It's getting worse. It's super dangerous. You know, you only got one lane. You're supposed to share the road with bikes. Nobody does. The sidewalk is actually dropping on the west side. So it's, I used to run over it every day, but it's so narrow that trucks with big mirrors almost hit you. So I now totally avoid it. It's not safe. It needs to be done. It's, it's time to sign.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Yep.
Amanda Ellis Thurber, West Brattleboro. I'm wondering, Dan, it said if the, if the project is suspended for winter, that the municipality is in charge of maintenance? And how much do you forecast that would, would it make one of the difference?
It'd be plowing. Yeah, we plow it now. So we'd plow the, the detour, the temporary bridge and the temporary sidewalk. That would likely be the extent of it.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Did someone make a motion? No, they did not. Would somebody?
Happy to do that.
Peter?
All right. I authorize to the execution of the finance and maintenance agreement between Brattleboro and the state of Vermont for the Brattleboro BF 2028 project.
Nice. Thanks. Peter's made a motion to authorize the execution of the finance and maintenance agreement between Brattleboro and the state of Vermont for the Brattleboro BF 2000 parentheses 28 bridge project. I insisted bridge, but that's okay. Any final discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero. We're getting a bridge sometime in the future. All right. Sorry about your yard.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
We need the bridge.
That's right. Thank you. We're going to move on to item E, which is about another couple of bridges and an island. The Hinsdale Island and the Anna Hunt Marsh and Charles Dana Bridges, which are the bridges that are now no longer in use for vehicles connecting the state of Vermont with the state of New Hampshire, between Brattleboro and Hinsdale. On, God, what day was it?
Monday.
Monday? Yeah, it's been such a crazy March already. On Monday, March 3rd, the Brattleboro Select Board and Hinsdale Select Board held a joint meeting where the New Hampshire Department of Transportation and the Southwestern Regional Planning Commission, and also aided and abetted by V-Trans, which is the Vermont Agency of Transportation, gave a presentation about plans to minimally, I'm doing this off the top of my head, minimally rehabilitate the bridges there to a cost of about 9.3 million, which is federal funding. Someone please correct me when I start to get things wrong.
You're doing great.
Doing good.
Federal funded. And there is a question, really, multiple questions, that the Hinsdale Select Board and the Brattleboro Select Board need to wrestle with in order to, at some point, enter into something like a finance and maintenance agreement with the New Hampshire DOT. No, with Vermont DOT?
V-Trans.
Okay, I got pretty close. It's just the next day over. And so we wanted to make space in a regular select board meeting, that's actually a special select board meeting, to talk about this project. We're not making any decisions tonight. The meeting that took place on Monday was actually really well-attended. Lot more people there than I thought there would be. And it was people from both sides of the river. We asked BCTV to record it. Thank you, BCTV, for doing so. I'm not quite sure when it'll be up. It wasn't, you know, available live, but we at least have it on tape. And so folks can see the presentations that were made. And I think at this point, can hear about the select board members' experience and town staff if they want to offer that as well. So that folks know, like, what the questions are, what's at stake here. Elizabeth, do you have things you'd like to say?
I certainly do.
Great. Thanks.
Yes, the meeting was well-attended, much better attended than this evening. But there's, there's some fundamental questions that New Hampshire DOT kind of glossed over that both the Hinsdale Select Board and the Brattleboro Select Board called them on. And there's been some visioning going on about what to do with this bridge. And Patrick's been involved, and it's been all very nice. But when the federal process to build the bridge and to, the new bridge, and to approve the new bridge took place, there were commitments made by New Hampshire DOT, but only so far as maintaining the existing bridges, which they got a sum of $10 million to perform. They did not seek any funding for any programming or maintenance for the bridge itself and, and the entirety of the span between the two, Hinsdale and Brattleboro, to complete any of that visioning that took place over the many years. And what New Hampshire DOT said to us basically is, okay, you ready? Are you ready to, you know, pay for whatever you want on this bridge? And are you and Hinsdale ready to make a deal for the future of this span? And we were like, no, we're not ready at all. We're not ready to, you know, fund anything. We're not ready to be financially responsible for anything. We're not ready to have the police or, or public safety on anything. We basically are nowhere. And what we agreed to was to continue to meet with the town of Hinsdale to say, basically, gee whiz.
Mm-hmm.
And I cleaned that up.
Yes. Nice. Peter?
Yeah.
This is such an interesting item. We just get to like, talk about what we remember happening, how we feel about it.
The other thing that New Hampshire DOT kept saying is that, we're going to make it pretty, then it's going to be really low on the priority for us.
A low priority asset.
Low priority asset. They kept repeating that, repeating that, repeating that. And that basically means that, once they make it pretty, in 10 years, when it's ugly, it's going to be a low priority asset. So they're never going to fix it. And the one thing that we recognize is, even though that bridge resides largely, both of them, in New Hampshire, it is in large part of our downtown. It is right there. We look at it, we cross over it, we see the island. When you go into downtown Hinsdale, it is miles away. So it too would be a priority. And I don't think, I don't think we are ready to absorb a cost a decade from now for something that the state who actually owns it deems it as a low priority asset. So it just, I mean, I love the visioning around the idea and the, and the beautification that it could be. I see how people's energy will wane around it. I see how there's, there's a lease thing being thrown around there that could come to fruition, could not come to fruition. But again, the, the thing that Guy kept repeating, like constantly, like a slow drip, low priority asset, so.
Thank you. Richard?
Well, after digesting everything from that meeting, my impression and what to do about everything wasn't on the table. But it seems like this, this would be an ongoing debate and headache and all kinds of twists and turns, and who's going to pay for this? And my feeling is, tear the bridges down, let the island and the land that's there revert back to its natural state. I don't know what it would cost.
About nine million.
I don't think, I don't know if that nine million recovered. I have no idea. But based on everything that I heard at that meeting is, this is just going to be a headache for years for both towns. And I don't see any way that there's a good resolution other than getting rid of the bridges.
Okay.
And there was a, a Hinsdale Select Board member who agreed with you.
Oh, yeah. Franz?
I have a different point of view. I think there were two pieces of information that came out that were clarifying and very important. One being that the bridges and the islands are the property of the state of New Hampshire. So it's not anything that we own. And in fact, it's not clear to me that it's anything that we have And in fact, it's not clear to me that it's anything that we have any decision-making capability about, that the bridges and the islands are owned by the state of New Hampshire and managed by their Department of Transportation. But the other piece of information is that the state of New Hampshire and I guess all the parties involved, our agency of transportation, made a deal with the feds. And the deal is that they will rehabilitate and maintain the bridges. And they own the islands. So they can do what they want with these properties. They don't need our permission, they don't need our money. This is just their stuff. Now, they were coming to us for a couple of pieces of information. And I think they were hoping that we were going to say, oh, yeah, we would like to see this grand vision of plants and restaurants and food trucks and an amphitheater and all the kind of visioning stuff that went on. They, you know, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation would have liked to have heard from the town of Brattleboro that we're really into that and we're willing to pay for it, which we're not. But they're still committed to the basic functioning of the, the roadway that's there, not for cars, but for bicycles and pedestrians, which to me is a good thing. It's good if we have, you know, if bicycles and pedestrians who want to go across the river have their own protected way to do it that doesn't involve going up on the Big New Bridge, et cetera, nothing against the Big New Bridge, but I think it would be good, it would be a good thing if we had this alternate way to, to get across the river. And the state of New Hampshire is committed to doing that. Now, I can see where there are some wrinkles in it and we've got to look down into the future. And I, you know, I don't know what the actual agreement says between New Hampshire and the feds. And I don't know what the penalties for the state of New Hampshire would be if they violated that agreement. So there, there's more to find out. But I don't, I, I don't think tearing the bridges down is an option. They're not our bridges. We don't get to decide that. If New Hampshire wants to tear them down, they've got to negotiate with the federal government because they took the $10 million from the feds and they promised to maintain the, the access for bicycles and pedestrians. So, I mean, there's a lot more to learn, there's a lot more to think about, but I, I think we just have to, to go through this process and, and find out more about what the legal restrictions are and what the implications are for what New Hampshire can and cannot do. There is one thing that they really wanted from this meeting, and I think they got it enough, which is they want to start the work on this. And the one thing they don't know is whether, there, there's, so there's going to be this 14-foot-wide pedestrian bicycle path that goes across these bridges and across the island. It's going to be 14 feet wide. And that leaves six feet and four inches of additional width on the bridges to do something else with. And what they really wanted to know was should we split that into two pieces of three feet two inches on each side of the walkway, put the walkway right down the middle of the bridge? Or should we put it off to one side and preserve the entire six feet four inches as usable space? Like, for example, tables and seating, you know, for the Whetstone Station Restaurant is going to come back and they want outdoor seating on the bridge or something like that? Or are we more likely to want planter boxes, in which case you'd probably want a three-foot planter box on each side of the pathway? So that's what, that's the, the one thing that, you know, I, I talked to the, the New Hampshire DOT guy afterwards, and, you know, they really wanted to hear that so that they could start their project on their bridges. And I think they came away hearing that it's better to preserve the six feet as a single space for possible...
I feel like, I feel like you and I were at different meetings.
Okay. You, you can feel that way.
Let's allow Franz to finish and then we can all chime in.
That's what I think they came away with. And I think they're going to start this work. Well, actually, the, the guy at the end said, well, we're going to come back in a month and see if you folks have made your mind up about this.
That's what we agreed upon.
So, um, so we are going to hear from them again soon, but I, I'll rephrase it. I'll say that I think that's where they're tending is that, because they want this lease from whoever wants to use that space. And if nobody's willing to put flower boxes there, which nobody is, as far as I could tell, then they're going to preserve the six-foot space for the possibility of food truck, restaurant, something like that. Anyway, that, that's what I, that's what I heard. And I think it's really, you know, it's great that they came and asked this stuff, but what they're going to do is going to be their decision.
Okay. I did some table setting. I'd like to provide my opinion about this all now. So like, I think Franz made a really important point. New Hampshire Department of Transportation owns these structures.
To your point.
Right? We own 7% of one of the bridges. Yes. Well, so let me, I'm feeling generous. I think it's important to recognize that, like, for a lot of people, the project is a very exciting project. It's something to feel positive about and something to look forward to. You know, rehabilitating the bridges to preserve a sort of like pedestrian bike access to the Wentzaski Trail System is a good thing. People are, you know, largely kind of looking forward to that. And so one of the things that they asked towards the end of this meeting, where there was very clearly not a lot of, like, consensus around which direction to go, was what do you want to see happen next? And so we proposed that sometime in around about a month from now, that the two boards get back together. And my hope in that was that people will have had a chance to think about this project and will have given both towns some feedback about it and will have a clearer sense of what the community wants. You know, it's kind of interesting really that this work that the existing bridges committee did, that Patrick sat on, for how many years?
Three years.
Three years. You know, kind of like took place, but no time during that was there, like a, a meeting of the two towns. Liz and I have been on this board for six years and we never did one. Go ahead.
I feel like you're asking me. Tell me about that. Are you?
No, not really. I'm just telling the world.
I was eager to say something.
I, I, I'll get to that in a second, yeah. So what I understood was, you know, here's some property that almost entirely is owned by New Hampshire. And they're looking for some entity to kind of lease, so enter into a lease agreement to commit to like, I don't know, certain things, you know, maintenance program and that kind of thing. And I think it's really important that that process is done in a public way and a fair way. You know, there was some talk of like a private leaseholder, not a municipality, engaging with that project. And if that is what ends up happening, and it happens through a fair and kind of transparent process, fine, but I don't think that should be happening in any kind of backroom kind of way. And so this board and that board needs to talk about leasing with New Hampshire Department of Transportation and, and private entities that are interested in leasing also need to like say that in public and allow the public to vet these proposals and weigh in on it, I think. You know, I, I think this is public land.
Well, one of the questions that, that I asked was in, in, with this concern of them constantly repeating this is a low priority asset, if there is a leaser on it, does it raise the priority level? I think the answer was yes.
Yeah, kind of.
It's sort of like, hmm, if it gets it done, maybe.
Yeah. All right. So the board has all kind of gave its impression of the meeting and its opinion. I think, John, you'd like to weigh in a little bit?
No, no, that, it was just the point about ownership, so.
Okay. Patrick, do you want to weigh in? Certainly you've been involved in this project for a long time.
Yes, thank you, actually. And, you know, speaking only on my own behalf, but, you know, I chaired that subcommittee for three years. And I found it to be a deeply frustrating experience in that, you know, we were soliciting feedback from the general public. What would you like? You know, would you like a piece of pie or would you like a piece of cake? By the way, we don't have either, but we'd like to know what it is you'd like. And so the, the, the highest rated concern that we were able to gather from the public was that whatever happens there, I, I mean, there was a lot of, you know, a boat landing would be great and an amphitheater would be nice and a boardwalk would be fun. All of that was true. But overarching priority expressed by the public was that we want the end result to be safe and clean. And so at the meeting the other night, I was quite heartened to hear that the state of New Hampshire is acknowledging ownership of the bridges and the island, that certainly... Patrick, I'm sorry?
Why don't you pause your, for just a second, Patrick? We'll think about safe and clean. Because, I don't know.
They hack it, these people don't have day jobs.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, Patrick, it's not your fault.
Oh, that's good. Oh, hey, come on now.
So safe and clean is what we're looking for.
That's not what we're getting right now.
What is it about your meetings?
They're just really captivating.
Okay. So the over, good, the overriding priority expressed by the public was safe and clean. The end result needs to be safe and clean. So while it was nice to hear that they acknowledged that they own the island and they own the bridges and it's their responsibility, that, that was kind of new and it was really welcome news, I would say. It was really disappointing to hear that there was no public safety plan whatsoever. And in fact, oh, come on, man.
It's a family show.
Yeah, it should be.
Supposed to be, anyway.
All right, I'm going to keep this little column up because it might help me a lot. So it was disappointing to hear that there was no public safety plan. And, okay, that was good. And so there will need to be police, fire, EMS and trash collection services on that island in order for it to be safe and clean. And New Hampshire DOT had no intention of not only having a, they didn't have a plan, they had no intention of developing a plan. And so when I look at that, I see the outcome of this project putting an undue burden on New Hampshire and, and Hinsdale frankly, and the town of Brattleboro. So for the, for the town of New Hampshire, they're going to be required to provide fire, EMS, trash collection and police services to that island because it's in New Hampshire. But of course, it's 20 minutes to the west of their town, more or less. And I would imagine it's not going to be their top priority. It's a attractive nuisance in our, right in our front yard, in, more or less. And so it's, it's an unnecessary burden to the, to the town of Brattleboro. And I just don't, I find it difficult to accept that outcome as just, well, there's not much we can do about it. And if the, i- i- if they're going to spend $9 million, I'd say let's stop for a second and consider bridge removal as a possible outcome as opposed to bridge rehabilitation. Now, I've heard a couple of reasons along the way over the course of these years from New Hampshire DOT why bridge removal isn't an option. And part of it was, well, it wasn't part of the original plan. Well, times have changed and I think it's time we take a second look at this. But in addition to that, I would say I've heard, well, the bridge abutments, if they were to be removed, might release dangerous hazardous materials into the river. And of course, the bridges are historic. All true. Leave the abutments, cut the bridges off and, and, and take them away. And historic, okay. So when you tell me that the plan is to rehabilitate them and then make them a very low priority, I think we all understand what that means. They are going to be neglected. And demolition by neglect does not serve any historic preservation function. So, again, speaking only for myself, I think it's at least worth the conversation if, if this is the way the Brattleboro Select Board feels and if this is the way the Hinsdale Select Board feels, maybe together we could say, let's take a second look at this. And perhaps that federal funding could be used in a different way.
Thanks, Patrick.
I'm sorry about all that.
Okay.
No.
Boiling up for three years now.
Let's, let's say it from the public. Nate?
Nate King, West Brattleboro. All right, everybody wants to tear it down. I respectfully totally disagree with you guys. We, for the last year, have debates. What are we going to do to revitalize our downtown? Bridge of flowers. Shelburne Falls does it. It's a tourist attraction. It pulls tons of people in. That bridge, that island is historic to Brattleboro. Go look in any history of Brattleboro book. There was an amusement park there that, 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 it was, I know that New Hampshire owns that, but that's Brattleboro. We really need to revitalize that, turn that into tourist attraction. You get rid of those bridges, you completely eliminate all waterfront in downtown. We have this beautiful river that is completely cut off from, from, all we have the Whetstone. The Whetstone, that's floundering. Who knows when that'll ever open up again? That too may rot over time because there's no guarantees it's opening. We really need to look at this as an investment, as a tourist attraction, to pull people back. My family comes up from Pennsylvania and they love to go to Shelburne Falls and spend the afternoon there, walk across the bridge, get lunch at Gypsy Rose, you know, just, just hang out in the town. It's, it's, it brings income. It would be a huge benefit to Brattleboro to do such. Now, maybe you compromise and you only do one bridge to the island and you do maybe demolition the other bridge. I don't know, but I really think just eliminating these bridges is completely a terrible idea and we completely lose our contact with the water downtown. And it would be a very, very sad thing to not beautify that and use it as a benefit to draw more people down. You bring people down, then you can feel businesses want to be here and it'll just all work out in a, in a positive light. Tearing it down is just not a good idea.
Thanks, Nate. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Tom?
Oh, I'm sorry, Aaron, you had your hand up.
I'm Mosakowski. I had a question, well, I have a few, again, but Franz's description there of kind of the, his take on the dynamic of, you know, the, the power, the power dynamic really helped me because I wasn't sure, like, does DOT actually need your decision or a vote? And it, it sounds like, it sounds like they don't. So, you know, I think it's important to be, you know, clear-minded and clear with what we want and, and, but not be too, not be too forceful because they may just do what they want to do. Anyway, though, I liked hearing, I was at the meeting, I liked hearing that select board members saying that they prioritize an open process to, you know, if a lease will be pursued instead of, you know, just DH, New Hampshire D, New Hampshire DOT potentially just, you know, going with the first, you know, the first decent offer that got whispered in their ear or told to them. Maybe some other proposals will come in that will be great, maybe they won't, but I think at least having an open, open, fair, you know, well-publicized process is, is really important, if the bridges will stay and if they'll be leased. I liked hearing too, and I advocate for this to be, you know, stated again like that prior point, that if there is lease income money, that somehow that be really directed towards the low priority maintenance and actually, you know, build up that, like a specified fund or create a fund where maybe there will be none to, to help with maintenance going forward of the bridges. I was, you know, I'm no bridge engineer, but I wasn't clear, if, if you're rehabbing and, you know, a bridge that could handle being totally loaded with trucks and cars, why does, why does it need to be figured out now where the 14 feet go? Is that just because they're going to paint the lines and they don't want to have to change the lines later? I feel like if the bridge could be rehabbed to handle all possible options, which there's just two of, the 14 feet in the middle or the 14 feet on one side, then a future lease that gets chosen could then just use either the three feet and three feet or the six feet. And that would make it a little bit more marketable for leases.
Thanks, Tom. I feel like we didn't bite on that, which side of the thing, because it felt like that was a question without answers to a lot of preceding questions. Elizabeth?
I think they said that they wanted that answer so that they could design the rehabilitation to meet the weight loads that were being proposed on one alternative or the other. They weren't going to blanketly propose to rehabilitate the entire roadbed of the bridge or the entire land area of the bridge. They were only going to essentially wait parts of it for its intended use, and that they were looking for us to make that decision so that they could proceed with their design.
Was there a part, and I'm just recalling, there's the pedestrian walkway, and if I recall correctly, they'll be removing that.
On the second bridge.
On the second bridge?
Is that right?
So, not on the primary bridge?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, there is no walkway on the second.
It's, there is one, yeah.
Aaron, did you want to speak? Yeah.
Aaron, so, I can totally see the vision of developing the area and have it be a tourist attraction, but you have to look at the future economic costs of if New Hampshire isn't going to maintain it, or if it needs rescue services, it only makes sense that's going to come out of our pocket, if we're going to be the ones utilizing that space. My fear is, with such a low priority, you end up with a similar situation like you have in Chesterfield, with the eyesore that got left behind, and you're just kicking a can down the road, and it's only going to be more expensive to, you know, take down later if need be, and if it's possible, with the funding that was set aside to rehab, to remove, I think it has to be considered. I'm not saying to remove it, but I'm saying it has to be a consideration.
Thanks, Aaron. I wondered, you know, and sometimes when we're negotiating contracts, we don't talk about, like, it's pretty unusual for us to have this kind of conversation in public. You know, and like, we're talking about potential lease agreements here, and I don't want to kind of get too kind of caught up in like what could and couldn't be in play, but I think any future lease that New Hampshire enters into with these bridges needs to account for a response to public safety, and, you know, technically, right, it's Hinsdale that would be expected to respond, but if, in that lease, you know, it's much easier and quicker for Brattleboro to respond, it's just not literally our jurisdiction, right? But, you know, if a future lease had some agreement around that, with some kind of remuneration, maybe that would be palatable, I don't know. But I think, you know, there's a real question, right, of like, who is going to take responsibility for ongoing kind of maintenance, ongoing public safety? The town of Hinsdale did not seem particularly interested in that, although they would be, like, responsible, right? And so, I think that's the question, and so, even if a private, you know, entity were to agree with a lease, I think that question still needs to be answered in that lease as well, some sort of MOU or something. John, and then Franz?
Oh, go ahead.
Franz, and then John?
Well, I just want to point out that, you know, law enforcement, public safety services are a big question here, that I don't have an answer to. But from emergency medical services, the town of Hinsdale, I think, uses Rescue Inc. And these would be, whatever medical needs were taking place out there, would be the responsibility of the town of Hinsdale to provide those services, however they do it, you know, and then Rescue would show up, and they'd send a bill to somebody for something, same as they do for all their other patients that they take, and they'd presumably take them to Brattle Memorial Hospital, just like they do with everybody else. So, I don't see that part of it as an issue. The police part, you know, response to some kind of dangerous activity, that's a real question, how that would work.
Yeah, thank you, good reminder. Other thoughts? So, this is going to kind of come back, oh, sorry, John.
Just, yeah, so, other thoughts, Daniel, is, so, in order for you to have a productive meeting with the Hinsdale Board in a month's time, is there anything you might want to convey in a letter or otherwise to them, or is there public information that you would like to gather between now and then? Do you want to have a subcommittee of, would you want to suggest a subcommittee of a couple of select board members and a couple of Hinsdale members to try to hash this out and come up with a recommendation that could come back to the two boards? What are some of your thoughts on?
Those are great ideas, John.
There you go.
I think also, like, not only select board members, I think Planning Commission, Conservation Commission seem to have interest in this, right? Okay. I think it's really important that we have, you know, not only select board members be on that.
Yeah, I would just caution in making too big of a committee to start a conversation with.
Yeah.
And also, just, I think, one of the things, I think, that that night, when they were trying to push on the three feet versus the six feet, in order to sell it, if they had the, this idea of what it was going to be, they could paint the picture and sell us, and for lack of a better term, a bill of goods as to what we might be able to envision. So, if they knew what direction that we could go in, they could focus on that and give us this spec unit that could it be. Now, I'm not, of course, advocating that it be torn down, but I'm advocating that we don't take this as a financial responsibility somewhere down the line and make this a Brattleboro taxpayer problem.
The thing that's most disappointing to me is that they had this huge federal grant to build the bridge, and they took care of their own immediate needs, and they did not include any sort of future programming. And what we would need to explore, Hinsdale and ourselves, would be whether there is any outside funding to program this and to maintain this in the way that would be safe and clean for our futures, and, you know, all the good ideas that have been identified for this bridge are swell, but we have, again, these basic questions, and so, I don't know that a larger group would help us tackle these most basic questions that have to be answered between us and Hinsdale.
I mean, I like all the things that John brought up, and I think it would be really kind of necessary to sort of boil that down and then open it up to a wider conversation.
And I definitely think it would be a good idea to toss around our next meeting with Hinsdale and figure out what it is that we need to know, but certainly, sources of funding are right up there on the top.
Okay, Kate?
Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. There's going to be a new select board on May 24th, so I'm kind of wondering, I'm assuming you'd wait until the new board comes to have these discussions, as opposed to in a month from now, which is, you know, if we're meeting with Hinsdale in a month from now, that doesn't give the new board the opportunity to be the ones that, they're going to be the ones that carry this forward, that's just...
Well, I think that's precisely why we waited.
That's why we're waiting.
You know...
We said that at the meeting the other night, that it would be a new board.
We proposed that amount of time because we can't let it just linger too long, but we also need to give a little bit of time for the new board to take their seats. I mean, you hit the ground running, right? There's plenty to do. People can do their homework in advance.
And first order of business is get a debrief from Patrick.
Yeah, yeah. Amanda?
Here I am at the mic again, Amanda, West Brattleboro. Was Wyndham Regional Commission at that meeting?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Are there grants that you know about, that they were offering or talking about?
No, but the Connecticut River Conservancy was there, and they were pie in the sky-ing some ideas.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to our next and final item? Okay, so, what's the space on that? And please provide more feedback. I think that is helpful for this and the future board. So, our next item is a public arts project being proposed by an artist, Hels Gibson. They're from the UK, maybe I know them. It's a small place. And it is like, what, 2:13 in the morning in the UK, I think?
Yeah.
Hi.
Poor person.
So, you've either had a good late night, or you're...
Now, I'm staying up to see, to meet you guys. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. So, just to set the table, welcome to Brattleboro, virtually.
Thank you.
At some point?
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time in Vermont, I know the state really well, and I know Brattleboro. I know a lot more about Brattleboro after listening into this meeting.
Yeah, there's a lot to know. Okay, so, Hels has made a proposal to do a mural in the Harmony Lot, and the Town Arts Committee has already reviewed this and is supportive of it. I think Jenna Struble from the Town Arts Committee was interjoined.
Yeah.
And we're just checking in the participants list, and in the meeting, they could just raise their hand and let us know. And so, the board has been asked to approve the project, but I think before the board considers that question, it'd probably be good for Hels to talk about the project.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me. It's a project I'm working on for the next five years, so it's a bit of an ambitious one. The project, the idea of the project is to paint a mural in every state of America. So far, I've been approved for three states, which I'll be painting in the next six months, hopefully four, with Vermont and Brattleboro. And it's a project I've been working on that is kind of to celebrate each state, the uniqueness of each state through the state flower, but also to bring all the states together by creating murals that are, yeah, similar in every state, but unique to the state flowers. So, I think I, hopefully you guys got my proposal, so you can see the visuals.
Yes, we did, thank you, yeah. Anything more you want to tell us about it?
I mean, my interest in Brattleboro really was the, is the mural scene there anyway is a really, the art scene in Brattleboro is, you know, really an interesting scene, and the art scene, the kind of the mural artists you have, who've already done a few murals there, are really, really interesting artists, and I'd love to be kind of involved in the art scene in Brattleboro more anyway, because I spend a lot of time in Vermont. I do a lot of work there anyway, a lot of artwork there anyway. So, I think Brattleboro would be, and I found the wall that I kind of, I fell in love with, which is, at the moment, doesn't have anything on it. So, I'd love Brattleboro to be my, my location for the Vermont mural of this project.
Great, thank you. Okay, board members, questions? Comments?
What has the Arts Committee said about this?
Liz is asking a question, what has the Arts Committee said? I didn't see it in the memo. Does any town staff member have knowledge of that?
I just heard that they were supportive of it, and that they would attend the meeting to tell you about that.
Okay. Very well. Well, they are not here, so we will, they're supportive of it.
I like the pride, I like everything about it.
Peter likes everything about it. Elizabeth?
So, we have other murals in town that have been supportive of them. None of them had words, and I... For, and I wondered about that.
Yeah, so, there's a couple, there's a mural just next to it that says, I think it's Welcome to Brattleboro, Vermont, which is just kind of a couple murals down. And there's another quite big mural in Brattleboro that has a kind of a huge Vermont, it says Vermont, I can't remember what else it says in it. I am a text-based artist predominantly, but this project started because I am also a photographer, so I have documented the growth of kind of nature in urban spaces. I'm really interested in kind of flowers growing through concrete and how kind of wild flowers grow, and that's how my work has developed into kind of text meets floral. So, the idea of having the text would be to emphasize the state, and obviously, the flowers grow in, is to kind of sum up what it is I'm doing as a bigger project. For me, the text kind of brings all of the murals together, otherwise, it's just kind of state flowers, and it might not kind of, it might not make sense as a wider body, as a coherent body of work.
Great, thank you. I think there are also some murals next to it with, like, banned books, definitely has text on it as well.
Yeah.
How is this being funded?
It's being self-funded by Hels.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks. Members with questions or comments? Let's have a motion, yeah.
I'll motion to approve the public art project Flowers Grow In by Hels Gibson to paint a mural on the back wall of the Harmony parking lot.
Thanks, Peter. Let's check in with the public. Members of the public with questions or comments on this? Yeah, Nate? I saw some thumbs up at the back, just so you know.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, good.
Brattleboro, the more mural is the better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, anything else? All right, then, let's vote on this motion. So, Peter made a motion to approve the public art project Flowers Grow In by Hels Gibson to paint a mural on the back wall of the Harmony parking lot. But maybe Hels can still hear us?
I can hear you.
All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, that passes 5-0. Hels, we look...
Thank you. I'd love to meet you all as well when I'm there. Hopefully, I can meet you in person.
If you're in a different time zone.
Thank you so much for your time.
Welcome, have a nice...
Thank you.
Okay, so, that concludes our warned business. Elizabeth?
I move to adjourn.
Elizabeth has made a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, we have adjourned. Thank you so much to our interpreters, to BCTV, to members of the public, town staff, and my colleagues, and good night. One more in the books.
Why did we make that woman wait now to take the last?
I am a little confused.
Wait, she should have been like...